It is 5:30. It's September 17th today. This is the Harpswell Planning Board. We are here starting a little bit early for our regular Wednesday meeting because we have a couple of issues. We have several issues on the board's agenda, and this one, we wanted to make sure that we gave the applicant and the public enough time, and ourselves enough time on this, so we're not here till 9:30 at night or something. But we're happy to be here, and I'm going to open this meeting and ask our vice chair, Dan, if he would lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. The first issue before us is Coastal Main Ventures, 28 Field Road. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm way ahead of myself. Thank you. So, we're calling it to order. I want to ask the planning board members to introduce themselves. We do have a quorum, starting with Lori.
Yeah, I'm Lori Rice with Great Island.
Heather Allen, Condes Harbor.
Amy Heibel, Harpswell.
Dan Holbeck, Oars Island.
Courtney Schnellings, Oars Island.
And I'm Margaret McIntyre, the town planner.
All right. Do we have to appoint an associate member?
Mm-hmm.
Which would be Courtney. I mean, not Courtney, which would be Heather. I thought we'd already done that, but obviously we hadn't. So, do we need a motion for that?
No, I think you-
The select board appointed her.
You can just assign her a voting member for the meeting.
Well, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, so we have four people.
And we have, well, we have five, so she makes the fifth one.
Yeah. Well, we only need four for a quorum, so you're welcome to vote. Good. Excellent. All right. So, and we have introduced board members, and Margaret, did you introduce yourself?
She did.
I did. I just want to say something really fast for anybody who's joining us by Zoom, which there isn't anybody yet. Maybe we'll wait. But the procedure will be, I expect that maybe somebody will join us tonight, and we haven't had that before.
Okay.
So, the, I talked about it with the administration, and the procedure will be, they'll be muted and raise their hands, and then we can call on them and ask them to unmute themselves.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you. If I don't see it, will you?
Yeah, well, I'll keep an eye on it.
All right. So, this is a fairly complicated application. The application is for, as I said, 28 Field Road. It is to remove a non-conforming pier and construct a new non-conforming pier in its place. The property is located in the commercial fishing one zone. There are setback issues with this property, and it's a water-dependent use, which of course is allowed in commercial fishing one. But there are, there's a history to this and several issues. We do have the planning board's attorney here, which we are very grateful for, Natalie Burns. So, what I would like to do after consulting with our vice chair is to ask Ms. Burns if she would be willing to answer questions for us, because this really, this could be a cutoff issue. So, we would love to have your summary and anything that you'd like to share with the board.
Thank you. I know that this board has been through this already, so I won't go back over any history of it. I think one thing that's important to keep in mind here is that this is a, this is a matter where the select board has approved a consent agreement with the property owners concerning this, this issue, and that may come up. That may be relevant to some of your consideration this evening. However, this is an allowed use in this zoning district. A dock is allowed here, and so it is not a non-conforming use. I think there was a question that came up about whether this was something that was possibly subject at some point in time, not, maybe not now, but in the future, because it hadn't been used, would it be considered abandoned? And the answer to that is no. There's not an abandonment of non-conforming structures provision in the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance. There is, of course, as you know, an abandonment of non-conforming uses. But again, because the dock is an allowed use, it doesn't get abandoned, even if it wasn't used for several years. And so, because it is an allowed use, but a non-conforming structure, since it does not meet the necessary setbacks, then this board reviews that. There is a proposal to change the location of it, to relocate it, and obviously do reconstruction of it at the same time. And so, that is subject to a review under the greatest practical extent standard, which I'm sure this board has used many times with non-conforming structures in the Shoreland Zone. And so, that's what you will be looking at tonight. With that said, that makes it sound really easy, but I know that it really isn't. And so, I wanted to say that, but I'm also here to answer your questions for you. So, anything that anybody would like to ask, please do.
Thank you. That was pretty clear.
I actually do have one question.
Yes.
That got brought up in prior conversations, that there was a dispute on the property lines. Would that have a bearing? Because if we're assuming that it's conforming based on the lot lines, but that changes with the legal dispute, you know, how do we handle that?
Well, of course, we'll be, we're going to be very precise with our language tonight. It is not going to be conforming as to the setbacks. But that's not really the issue that you have. The issue you have is how do we determine what the setback is? And I believe that while there is a dispute about where the property line is, the dock is being pulled back from an area of potential encroachment so that it falls within what the lot lines are, understanding that there may be a dispute over that in court. But it is not up to this board to make a determination of where the property lines are. This board looks at, you've been shown right title and interest to a specific area, and you will review, make, do your review based upon the information that's been provided to you, understanding that if somebody wants to try to stop this from going forward, that is a private legal matter between the property owners and not something that the town is involved in. So, you can proceed based upon the information that has been provided to you about the property lines and do your analysis of whether it meets the setbacks to the greatest practical extent based upon that information.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, my question has to do with the physical structure of the dock right now. The fact that there really is no dock, because all there are pilings that are, that are sticking up. And my question has to do with the provisions of 10.3.2.2, reconstruction of or replacement, where it would be more than 50% of the value of the dock as it currently exists in order to replace it. And my question is, does that 18-month period to replace a dock apply here? Now, I'm thinking particularly in terms, the typical thing is that you have a dock, it's been destroyed or damaged in a, in a natural event, and then you say, okay, I want to replace this. It's got more than 50% value, it's, the value of it is less than 50%. It's been, it's been messed up. And I want to replace it. I want to do it within a period of 18 months. I think it's pretty clear that we can do that under this. My question is whether that applies here, since there really is no dock to replace.
And the answer to that is, normally you would do a lot of factual findings on that issue, but we have to fall back to the consent agreement here, and what the select board agreed would be, how this would be treated when it came before the planning board. And so, that is found, I know you have a copy of this. I'm not sure it has page numbers That is found in the consent agreement. I'm trying to find the exact language so that you don't have to be looking for it yourself.
I've got it right here if you need it.
I do have the consent agreement. I'm just taking a quick look at it. I believe it's in section 2, where it says that they'll submit a plan replacement, a replacement dock application, and that, and it says the CEO, but you've stepped into the shoes of the CEO by asserting jurisdiction over this, which you have the right to do under the ordinance. And this says that the, as long as certain steps are taken, the CEO agrees and will publicly opine as necessary that the proposed dock relocation contained in the application meets the greatest practical extent, and that the CEO will not challenge the replacement dock application's conformance with 10.3.2.2 of the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance. And so, those, that was the provision that you were referring to about, well, you know, was this done within the 18 months? This says that the town, and now that's you, initially the CEO, but now you, is not going to challenge that issue.
So, they essentially have determined what our purview is.
They have determined your purview, and your purview is to determine whether the setbacks are met to the greatest practical extent.
Okay.
Okay. I think what we, help me here, because I think we're dealing with two separate questions.
Mm-hmm.
One of which is, will the town question any setback requirements? And I think that's clearly, that's clearly outlined in the consent agreement. My question goes back to the other issue, which is regardless of whether setback requirements are waived or, or covered by the consent agreement, whether the fact that, that more than 18 months has elapsed, whether it binds us there as well. And I'm just looking quickly here. I didn't see anything there.
Well, actually, the reference to 10.3.2.2, the 18-month provision is in that. And so, when it says, it does, it does not reserve back the right to determine, because it says, at the very end, it says, "The CEO also agrees not to challenge the replacement dock's application conformance with 10.3.2.2 of the SLCO to the extent of the proposed dock location." To me, and I was not involved in any of this, that includes the 18-month provision. And so-
All right.
It certainly was something that you would normally be looking at, to say, has this been?
Yeah, because I was looking at the provision of paragraph 2, and it says, the CEO agrees and will publicly opine as necessary that the proposed dock relocation contained in a replacement dock application meets the greatest practical extent setback requirement of 10.3.2.2.
Right.
And then follows, "The CEO agrees not to challenge the replacement dock application in conformance with 10.3.2.2 of the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance to the extent of the proposed dock relocation." Because I guess, I guess all I'm seeing is that the agreement talks about relocation under that provision of, of the ordinance, but there's nothing that that references waiving the 18-month requirement.
But there would not be a consent agreement without that, because otherwise it would be going through your full review. If it, if you have to look at the 18 months, and then you have, you wouldn't look at the, at the greatest practical extent unless, unless the 18-month provision were no longer in play.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, I have a question, unless someone else does.
I always have a question.
All right. So, the greatest practical extent, that's my question. So, would it be within our, within our purview to reduce the width of the pier so that it is less non-conforming?
I believe that is within your purview, yes.
Okay.
But you do have an application before you for a specific dock. But I believe it's always true that you can say, this does not, but this will.
Okay. So, when we look for the greatest practical extent, we could say, I'm, I have to look at the application and, okay.
And the proposed use as well. You have to look at the application, the proposed use, whether, whether the width would be sufficient to support the proposed use.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
My question-
Yeah, of course. My, my question may not be a legal matter per se, so you can let me know that. What we have before us is an application for a dock that will be truncated, where the current one runs into, runs over the riparian rights of the property owner, the abutting property owner. And my question is, is it only within our purview to talk about the truncated dock? Because I wonder how floats will be attached without being in the riparian rights of the abutter if the dock is shorter. I'm trying to visualize this, but maybe that's not something to ask you. I don't know.
I, I think that is a factual question that you may inquire about. I know the applicant has, has professionals here who can help you with the factual determination on that. I do think that's a fair question for you to be asking.
It's a good question. I guess we'll find out.
If you don't have anything else right now, I'll be over there if you need me in the future.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Let's hear from, does the board have any more questions of, now we're ready to hear from the public.
From the applicant.
From the applicant and the public. Yep, absolutely. Applicant, by all means.
I just want to interrupt really fast and tell Paula on Zoom, if you want to speak, you need to raise your hand or maybe press 9 on a phone. There was instructions on the agenda, so if you want to speak, just let us know, and we will call on you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Forster with Flycatcher. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. So, we had a introduction to the project at the last meeting, so I'll, I'll kind of briefly, briefly go over it. You know, this is a existing non-conforming commercial dock owned by a commercial fisherman who wants to replace it in kind, and through the consent agreement, believes he has the right to do that. And, you know, part of that is to make it less non-conforming. I think I said that right. So, the way that we worked through this was first, he hired a surveyor. So, we have a survey plan provided to you that shows the property lines. I have a full-size copy if, if anybody needs to look at that. And then, from there, the, the deed for this parcel defines the, I'll say, the western property line. As you're standing on the road facing the water to the right, that property runs out to the southernmost tip of ledge. So, we were there on a negative tide, and you could clearly see where that spine of ledge terminated and dropped off. So, for us, it was obvious where that, that point is. Granted, it's the tip of the ledge, so perhaps that's a smidge arbitrary, but it's, it's, it's right there, and I think, I think that's, that's a fact. So, utilizing that, we were able to cut back that portion of the dock which extended over the, the property line, which is what we've shown you on the plan, and it keeps the entire pier structure on the, on the property. The addition of, of the ramp and float, I think that is not under what's being reviewed tonight by the town, but I'm happy to talk about it. It is a 55-foot ramp and then a 12-by-
20.
12 by 20?
12 by 20 float. And, and the way that the end of the pier is being cut off is to allow that edge, the closest edge of the float to remain in line with the property line extension. So, if you were to continue that line seaward, his entire pier ramp and float would be in front of his parcel.
Thank you. That was helpful.
Sure. I, I think the topic here is, is, you know, have we done our due diligence to the greatest practical extent? From a length requirement, I believe we have, we've shortened, shortened this up to get it within, within the boundary. The pier itself is only 12 feet wide. It was 12 by 48 originally. It's almost half that size now. He is a commercial fisherman. His son's a commercial fisherman, and commercial fishermen are allowed to build docks, that planning board review, up to 12 feet wide. Anything greater, you know, kicks the review up another, another level. So, I, I think that 12-foot is the minimum for a commercial dock. And also, from a lateral perspective, if we were to shift this off of the property line, off the, the right side, and slide it more into the property, there, there are several issues there. The dock itself is constructed right over the top of a spinal ledge, so all piles are, they're shorter because the ledge sticks up. But more importantly, it's, it's pinned right into that ledge. And this was also done under permit by rule by DEP, so replacement in kind means you can reduce your footprint, but you can't go outside of it. So, you know, if, if he were to relocate this somewhere else, he'd have, his, his permits wouldn't be valid from the state. And if the dock were to shift more to the other side, we'd still be a non-conforming structure on that side. So, whether or not you're non-conforming on the left or non-conforming on the right, you're still stuck in the middle. I guess that's my introduction. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will just note that on Tim's original application, he had included the ramp and float, and I requested that he remove that because it wasn't part of your review. So, I didn't think it was appropriate to, you know, make our decision on greatest practical extent of the pier based on the location of the ramp and float. So, I think he gave us both versions, so we could see them both.
It's always good to see the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Kristen Collins, Attorney for the applicant. Just wanted to touch on two things. In terms of the 50% rule and the reconstruction, I just wanted to point out, there is very much a dock there. It's got pilings, it's got a deck, it's got railings. Yes, they're in disrepair. But the structure is assessed at $43,000. That was increased in April of last year from the prior assessed value. So, the assessor, at least in the town, very much considers there to be a structure of value there. The replacement costs, my client can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe are actually less than that assessed value. So-
That's helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And in terms of the width, first off, it is a commercial wharf, so the intention is to replace it in kind. But I think the important word in this application is replacement. It's replacing a structure of similar dimension and dealing with this moderate relocation element to get it out of the setback. But it's a 12-foot structure. We're looking to replace it with a 12-foot structure, similar to if you had a house with a 1,000-square foot footprint, and you were looking to replace it under the same standard. You would be replacing a house with a 1,000-square-foot footprint.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Okay. Before we make any motions or have any further discussion, we'll hear from anyone in the public that would like to speak. Please go up to the podium and state your name and, okay? Yes, sir? As this gentleman is making his way up, just want to let folks know that we did receive a letter, which I don't have a copy of, but we just got it today or yesterday. It's from an abutter, and so that will-
You got it today. I think I got it yesterday.
Okay. So, that will go into the record. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. My name is Roger Terrio. My law office is in Bath, and I represent one of the abutters across the street, Gail Hunter. There are a couple of things here that trouble me a little bit, sometimes a lot. First of all, I want to raise the issue about plans that accompany the application. You've got an Exhibit A that looks like this.
Yep.
Okay. And you've got an Exhibit F that looks like this. All set? Exhibit F is a boundary survey done by Owen Haskell, Inc., which is a surveyor in Portland. And this was the property that Gail now owns, and this boundary survey was done in '08, I think. My eyes aren't all that good. They give you these reduced copies of these surveys.
I know. We face the same thing.
Drives me crazy.
I know. I totally get it.
Oh, well. We'll get by that. But you can see on, on this one, on Exhibit F, that the boundary line, as determined by the surveyor, cuts right through the middle of, of the pier. This is the Exhibit A that accompanied the application. And if you take a look at that, the adjustment is in the very end of the pier. So, I don't know which is the line. I mean, I'm betting on the surveyor, but this is not a survey. So, I think you're going to have to unravel that, and I think the litigation that's pending is intended to do that. So, it may be premature to even think about what we're going to do with this and whether it meets practical requirements. So, there's some work that has to be done I think you do have to take into consideration the new ramp and float, because this project, although you can split it in pieces, it's going to be a single property with a single use. And the location of the ramp and float is going to create more non-conforming setbacks. It's not going to make them better. It's going to say, it's going to create a situation where the setback violations are going to be worse, because there is no setback violation where the ramp and float are at this point in time. It's going to be created. And I think you need to take, take a look at that, because it would be somewhat, I think, disingenuous to grant this portion of the application process. And then, when you get to the second piece, the ramp and the float, find that you can't do that. And I think that's what you're going to find. So, I think you need to be a little bit more broad, broad in your approach, and I think a little more careful about what these property lines look like and where they are. You, you can't start a project, a project like this until you have a determination as to where the property lines are. We don't have that, except for the Owen Haskell survey. That's the only evidence, surveyed evidence, which is what the board insisted on when they, they went through the process and made the determination in the agreement, is they wanted surveyed determination where, in fact, on the face of the earth, those property lines were. And I think you're lacking that at this point in time. So, how you can make a decision when you don't know where they're actually proposing to build the pier and what it goes with it is unfortunate. I just don't think you can go very far forward until you have that determination made. There's two ways that it can be made. We can agree on where the property line is, which is highly unlikely, or we can allow the litigation to go through and make the, have the court determine where it is. Either way, there has to be a determination, and there hasn't been one at this point. Either way, there has to be a determination, and there hasn't been one at this point. There are some things that are involved in the process of tearing down and building the new one that have to deal with a number of things. I'm not sure that's within your purview tonight. That may be the Code's office's purview. What I'm talking about is things like where this material is going to be stored. In the application, they said they had to be left out for, what, 24 days, I think, something like that? Where are they going to be? There's not a much room on that lot. It's 1,300 square feet. It's unbelievably small. And sometimes there are properties that just will not allow themselves to be utilized because they lack size, they lack dimensions. And unfortunately, I think this is one of them. The rest of those, I think, are for the next round, so I'll save them until then. I'll be back.
Before you leave, look, I think we'll have an answer on the survey question in a moment. Is that correct?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
All right. So we'll deal with that survey question. You had a couple of other things that you mentioned that I think we need to address, one of which is the fact that, you know, the placement of a float is not part of this application. And we know that. However, anybody who, assuming that we were to approve this application today, that is done at the risk to the applicant that we will say later on that that float is not appropriate or doesn't meet muster. That's always the risk that an applicant takes when you break it into two parts like that. So that issue will be addressed at that time.
Of course, but I thought that it was fair to bring it up at this point in time and identify it as an issue.
Yeah, and so that, you can consider that fair warning to the applicant, in other words, right? The other thing you mentioned...
I'm not sure that's why I'm here.
No, I'm sure not either. You also mentioned pending litigation. And I think our attorney can correct us, correct me if I'm wrong here. But I do not believe that under Maine law, it is within our purview to delay an application due to pending litigation. There are a couple of cases on point on that, I believe. So the remedy, if this were to be approved and you believe that the pending litigation affected it, the remedy is not within the planning board, but it is within the existing lawsuit to issue a temporary restraining or a temporary injunction on something like that.
You're entirely correct. I only thought it was fair, again, to make sure that you were aware that that was an issue that would need to be resolved.
Yeah.
You know, if an applicant decides that they want to take the risk and they want to go ahead, then they're going to have to deal with the consequences down the road if, in fact, it turns out that it's not quite the way they think it is.
Yeah, and you know, Maine's approach to this, about the existing pending litigation, is not the way it is across the country. There are a number of states that take a very different approach, but we're in Maine.
Yeah, there's a case directly on point where they allowed an application to go forward, even though there was a dispute as to where the property lines were. So I'm stuck with that one.
Yeah, we're stuck too. We feel a little constrained by it as well. It doesn't seem to make sense. Nope. In fact, we recently approved a subdivision plan that may end up coming back and being amended within the year, so we don't know.
Yeah, you're right. It doesn't make much sense.
Yeah.
That's what the court found, so we're stuck with it.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm not sure...
I'll get out of here as soon as I can.
Take your time.
Yeah, take your time. I have another question, so take all the time you need. I'm sure that I do not quite understand the ramp and float issue that you just spoke about, that it would come back to us for our review. Why are we not reviewing it now?
That's why I asked that question.
I don't believe they requested it. Are they in the application?
Part of the consent agreement is that it would come back to the town in two separate applications. One is this question about jurisdictional review. And two is what the Code's office is considering, an expansion of the structure with the addition of a ramp and float. And this goes back to the history of, you know, the consent agreement and the questions between the Code's officers and the property owners. But originally, you know, there was a disagreement in whether or not there had been a ramp and float attached to the structure in the past. And so part of the consent agreement was, you'll come back for, to discuss the jurisdictional, the conformity of the pier. And then you will come back and say, we're going to, whether or not there was a ramp and float, we're not going to answer that question right now, but you'll come back as if it never existed and talk about the addition of a ramp and float. So that's the expansion, and that will just go through the Code Office, get weighed in on by the harbor master, and then ultimately go to the select board.
All right.
It's in here. I'm looking at it. It does say that it's split apart.
It's a two-part application.
So this could be a pier that just goes, that just stays the way it is right now, actually. All right.
Yep.
That's exciting.
I think there's a fair amount of commercial fishing piers in town that don't have ramp and floats.
Yeah, that is true.
Yeah.
That is true.
It's not uncommon.
Yep.
If I may, I just wanted to respond to the public comment that you received.
Tim, state your name again.
Yep, Tim Forrester, with Flycatcher here on behalf of the applicant. So I think there were two quick things. I mean, we've provided you a stamped, surveyed description of the parcel and showing the boundaries, showing the structure. So this is what I believe the town has asked for, is a stamped, surveyed plan. In fact, when asked to get involved with this project, I refused and said, "I'm not doing anything unless you get a stamped survey plan out there because it's a contentious issue." So in terms of the Owen Haskell survey, I don't know that that's even something, you know, that... I believe you're supposed to look at this on what's presented before you, and that's the surveyed plan. And beyond that, it would become a civil matter. But I would just add that the Owen Haskell plan shows that survey line, as he correctly stated, cutting off more of the pier. But the boundary, the line goes to the northern tip of the ledge, not to the southern tip of the ledge. So I'm not a surveyor, but I believe that survey is incorrect. That's just my opinion. And there was one other piece about it being a small parcel of land and the storage of materials while it's being worked on. You know, the applicant owns a house not too far away. Additional materials can be stored there. You can store material on the deck while you're working. It is a requirement that any pressure-treated materials be cured on dry land for 21 days prior to the start of construction. Most PT is already cured in the lumberyard before you even get it onto your property. Not all the time. Sometimes you can get some stuff that's a little fresh. But that's easily managed by storing it off-site at its own property. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. All right. Mr. Terrio. Would you like me to bring you that? You can stay there.
I'll bring you that.
Get in the mic, yeah.
Just very quickly, this is Exhibit A with the application. That is not a boundary survey.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you think the Exhibit A that you're showing is the exhibit from the consent agreement? Do you know, Tim? Did you have an Exhibit A with your application?
No.
Okay. No, he's looking at a Flycatcher plan, I think. But I think it's the exhibit from the consent agreement. No?
Doesn't matter where it's from. It doesn't do the trick.
Sorry.
Sorry. No, there's a couple of different things there. The plan that he is referencing, that's a Flycatcher document. We are not surveyors. That's why we have this or that as our, that is our surveyed plan. The other documents that were prepared, as I do for all projects, we generate plan views and cross-sections. So it's really the cross-section that we produced for this so that you could see the construction of it, the vertical timbers and vents, and how things are attached and the like. The reason why we submitted the exhibit, I think A, he called it, which, again, is our plan, which is not in my pile, is really for reference, to give you a Google Earth image of where this is located. And it's the survey that's the factual part. Ours is essentially there for reference.
All right. Mr. Terrio, do you have a copy of the morin survey?
Morin survey?
I believe that's the survey that the surveyor, that Flycatcher used.
I have a copy of that. I didn't bring it with me, but...
Okay. All right. All right.
Could I just clarify that Exhibit A is, in fact, an exhibit to the consent agreement? And the purpose of that exhibit is to be, is to show the reconstruction and partial relocation of the dock will be substantially, as depicted on the sketch, attached as Exhibit A. So I don't believe that was intended to be part of the application before you, but it is part of the consent agreement. And so any application that they provide to you does have to be substantially consistent with that. But it's not necessarily, it's not a full plan, and it's not a survey.
So the consent agreement is based upon a document that's not an official survey?
That is correct.
So if the official survey shows something different than Exhibit A, which was part of the consent agreement, does that nullify the consent agreement?
No, it would have to be something that is substantially different from it.
Okay.
There could be differences because it was not a survey plan. And this is quite common with consent agreements, that there are sketches that are done and that the survey work is done after the fact. If it were substantially different from it, you know, if it were a larger area and it was in a completely different area from what was depicted on the Exhibit A, that's not substantially in compliance with it. But the fact that it's not a survey and that the survey may look somewhat different, but not substantially different, is what you're looking at.
Okay. All right. Gotcha.
That part of the consent agreement was made, I believe, as like a document for everybody to determine how to move forward. So they just determined, you know, this will be generally what the replacement looks like. We'll iron out the details once we get the survey.
Yeah, I'm not familiar enough with the details. But if the boundary survey changes such that the shape of the pier has to be changed significantly so that it's no longer really usable, that's another issue, and I would think that would be substantial. That would be considered substantial.
Yeah, but we can't...
No.
We have the plan based on the survey. That's Tim's application.
Okay.
That's right. And it's like any application that you have before you. If somebody challenges something and it has to be changed as a result of it, then it comes back to you again, and you review it at that point.
Thank you.
I did call the surveyor.
Would you state your name?
I'm sorry, Tim Clark, Code's office in Harpsell. I did call the surveyor. He did not do a survey as he says. He used the two surveys. Bill Coombs's old, old survey was done in the '60s, I believe, and the Haskell Owens survey. He used those two. He felt that a third one would only confuse things. He did go on-site. He did at low tide to find all the points that were on there. I asked him about that. I don't know how that helped. I just wanted to let you know. He might have to come and verify his drawing, I guess, is all I'm saying. Because he told me I did not do an actual survey. I went there and I used the other two surveys to do the drawing. That's what he told me. That's all I know.
Okay.
And I only get concerned that on the one drawing shows on the wharf, it's plus or minus a certain distance of where the cut line is. I just think if it's going to be surveyed, it should be an exact number. Should be able to exact where it's going to be cut.
Yes, I agree with that.
Would you, what do you agree with?
If it's a survey, it should be exact. In my humble opinion, how can you use two surveys to determine something if the two surveys aren't the same? I don't know. That doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. Terrio has his hand raised. And, Tim, when you're finished, we'll get the microphone to Mr. Terrio and we'll go.
Sorry, is it me or him first?
No, that's all right.
So just to clarify, I mean, the plus or minus is the cutting of the wharf. It's not the boundary line itself. You know, when you have a wharf structure, we're not talking plus or minus five feet or 10 feet. You know, it's plus or minus within a foot, within a couple inches of the actual cutting of the wharf.
Thank you. Mr. Terrio, could some, yes, you have a...
Thank you. We have hired our own surveyor, and he has gone through, he's done a good deal of surveying in this area, not only this piece, Gail's piece, but other pieces. And he has verified to us that he would issue a letter saying that he agrees with and is in conformity with the Owen Haskell survey that's been provided, not the plan that's with your application.
It's my understanding, though, can our lawyer correct me if I'm wrong? We can't go by what might come forward. Is that, am I getting that correct? Yeah? Okay.
We can't, but one of the requirements for a complete application is that you have an accurate survey.
I'm also just uncomfortable with, like, nothing against Code's officer. I feel like we can't, without having the person that you spoke to send a letter or something, I don't know that we can go by that either.
Okay.
That's my feeling, is we are going, we should be going by what we have. And if we feel like we want other information, then we can ask for that. But hearing what people, I could come tell you that we're waiting for this too, but we don't have it. So we need to make a decision based on what we have here.
Okay. Or ask for some, or ask for something more. Right. Okay, thank you. Mr. Gilli.
Since you've received the letter, let me be abundantly clear. I am here...
Identify yourself, please.
I am. I am here as a member of the public. My name is Matthew Gilli. I am not here as an elected official or a member of any other board or commission. I am here exercising my First Amendment right as a member of the public. That being said, my family is the abutters to the east there. My grandparents own the beach to the east. And I have a couple of questions. One is the survey that is being provided, has that been registered? Like, the Owen Haskell one has been registered in the Registry of Deeds? And two, in the application, if you go to page nine under project description, I brought this up at the last meeting as well. It says on the second paragraph, the last sentence, says, "No trees will be cut or removed in order to complete this project." The Code enforcement officer at the time was Margaret and came down and confirmed that trees had been cut and trees would have to be replanted. This is an extremely steep bank. It's already been stabilized at least once in my lifetime. And with trees being removed, that greatly increases the risk for erosion, especially if they aren't going to be replanted. If this goes forward, I would at least like to see the trees replanted so we don't have erosion issues along that road because there are several properties beyond that that would be affected if that road collapsed. My other question has to do with parking. If this is a commercial wharf and they plan on using it that way, there is no parking there. And if, there has been times when the sheriff has had to been called and had to remove vehicles because other vehicles couldn't get down the road because they were blocking the roadway. So my concern is with parking, I understand that they have a property that's nearby... have a property that's nearby, but if they're lugging heavy fishing equipment, they're certainly not going to be lugging it from a couple hundred yards, or quarter mile, or half mile away. They're going to have to park somewhere, unload it, and, and deal with that. And how is that going to affect other people down the, down the line? And the last thing I want to say is I, the, the thing that gets me the most about this is, I think as a town, we're setting terrible precedent, if we approve something like this. We're kind of saying, and this is just my opinion, that I can go in, and I can find any wharf that's in town here, no matter the shape it's in, and I can buy it, and I'll be able to rebuild. You know, it doesn't, because that's what we're allowing to happen here. This was in disrepair, it'd been in disrepair for at least a decade, if not longer. And we, and this isn't on you, this was from the consent agreement, we've decided to ignore that, that fact, and just let it slide. And I, I don't like the precedent that, that's personally. And, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. What I would note is that I think the board's review is really limited. I wrote a memo, kind of, I feel like addressing some questions that kind of we all had when we took, when you took jurisdiction of the application, which is like, what's the scope of our review? And the scope of the board's review, in this case, is specifically limited to greatest practical extent. And, and after this, and I wrote this in my memo, but after this, then it'll go to the Code Office for processing, for compliance with all the rest of the ordinance. So whether or not there was tree removal, and what, whether or not parking can be considered, replanting be considered, all of that will be addressed when the Code Office reviews it.
Margaret, is it, is it?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is it possible for us to put conditions of approval?
I think so, because, well, I, maybe this is a question for our attorney, but we, because we took jurisdiction, we can put conditions of approval on what the scope of them are.
That's my question.
That would, that's not a question that I know the answer to. But I do know, because we did take jurisdiction, we can make these findings in conditions of approval.
Okay.
Yeah. But we've never, yeah.
Mr. Forrester.
If I may, I would just like to respond to Mr. Gilley's comment quickly. The first question was about the survey and the fact that it's not registered. There is no requirement that this be registered and filed. It's, it's a stamped surveyed plan. In terms of tree cutting, if you look at the photographs in, in the, in the application, the pier is built over ledge. There are no trees to be cut to replace the pier. I have, I have no comments on parking. I know nothing about the parking scenario. And in terms of his comments, the precedent, I, I agree. You know, currently, you can come into town, you can buy a piece of property, if there's a dock on there, you can rebuild it. And you can follow the rules, and, and make changes to it, and, and everything else. If, if that's an issue, then that's an ordinance change.
Yeah. I can also see that issue, especially for commercial fishing, going in the other way. Should we deny it, then the, you know, the opposite point of view might be, this is commercial fishing pier, and you need to let commercial fishermen do their business, because that's a, a large part of the business of this town. So, it's, it's kind of six of one, a half dozen of the other, in some ways. All right, we have people on the, on the phone. I want to give people who are on the phone the opportunity, if they want to make comments. Liz Ziegler and Paula's phone.
No comments from me at this time.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Yeah, Liz, welcome, Liz. We're not, we're not.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Nice to see you.
Thanks, you guys, as well.
Probably, probably a little bit longer. Okay, anybody else from the public that would like to comment? We've got a lot of people here. Okay. Dan, what do you think we should do? I can see you, you.
Oh, I'm just jumping up and down on my chair. There are just a couple of things. The first of which is, one of the things, the requirement, and this gets to the whole survey, is that you have to submit a boundary, you have to show where the boundaries of the property are. And once the applicant does that, that is sufficient, unless somebody else comes in and shows something different.
Yep.
And absent that, you know, I think what we have there is, is plenty sufficient.
I have a question. Is, is the boundary dispute currently under litigation? If that is the case, how can we make a decision if we don't have a clear boundary? I'm just asking the question.
That's a logical question.
I'm known for those.
And unfortunately, we, we can make a decision.
I feel like it was already answered.
It was answered originally by the attorney.
Yeah, it was, it was answered. I know, it, it's a logical.
Oh, that's that weird thing that you're talking about.
It's because of the state of Maine.
I think you have to pretend like you don't know there's a boundary dispute.
Exactly.
Sorry. It makes so little sense to me, that I just had to speak on it again.
No, but it is, it's logical. All right, so, um, Dan.
I have one, one other comment, and it has to do with the fact that we did receive a letter yesterday or today, which was made a part of the record. I do want to note, as a, as a, as a policy matter, that the second paragraph of that letter constituted a personal attack. And that has absolutely no place here. That's just it.
Thank you for that. I, I agree. Thank you. All right, I believe that we have two things that we need to do, as we move into our review here. The first is to determine whether or not the non-conforming lot and the, the proposed structure meets the standards to the greatest practical extent. And this is, this is just, like, being put in a box here, because there's no more room. If this was being proposed today, and there was no structure there, this would not be allowed. However, there is a structure there. The town has signed a, the select board signed a consent warrant, which does outline the purview of the planning board, and so we have to operate within that. So, um, I'm going to move that the planning board finds that the proposed removal and replacement of a non-conforming pier on map 63, Lot 77, is conforming to the greatest practical extent, based on the following findings. What I'm going to do is make the motion. Someone will second the motion, or not, and then we'll have a discussion, and then we'll have a vote. So, the first finding is that the pier is a functionally water-dependent use, and therefore, there are no setbacks from the upland edge, the roadside of the coastal wetland. The setbacks are 25 feet from the property lines, and the lot is 26 feet wide at its narrowest point. There's no location on the property for the pier to be conforming without a setback reduction from the CEO, which requires written consent from the abutters, which I believe we do not have. The pier is non-conforming in regards to the western property boundary, because approximately 50% of the structure is located over the riparian boundary with the abutter, tax map 63, Lot 63. The replacement pier will remove the western half of the structure, eliminating the encroachment. The replacement pier will be zero inches to the property line, which will be more conforming in regards to the western property boundary, by removing the structure from the abutters' property. That's difficult to get in your head, a lot of words there. The pier is non-conforming in regards to the eastern property boundary. To move the pier in that direction would create a new non-conforming condition, which is prohibited. The replacement pier will continue to be 23 feet from the eastern property boundary. So we have a motion with findings. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion?
Were we going to put any, were we going to talk about parking, or was that later on?
That's, that's not a part of our review.
Okay. As we were talking about, this is possibly, since we took jurisdiction.
This is whether it's conforming to the greatest practical extent.
Yeah.
And then we have another, another motion after that.
Okay.
So all in favor of the vote? Raise your hand. All right, thank you. Conclusions of law. Dan, do you want to do the conclusions? Oh, I'm sorry?
I don't think you've done hybrid meetings before, but I believe under the Freedom of Access Act, if it's a hybrid meeting, and there is somebody on the phone, you need to actually do a roll call vote on all your folks.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for reminding us of that. Okay, let's take that vote again. Laura, are you in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Heather?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Dan, aye.
Courtney, aye.
Thank you. Thank you for that reminder. All right, Dan, do you want to do the conclusions of law?
Sure. I move that in light of these findings of fact, with consideration given to the supporting documentation in the record, the planning board reaches the following conclusions. The planning board finds that Coastal Main Ventures and Jesse and James Clow have met the standards of the Town of Harpsville Shoreland zoning ordinance. The planning board approves of the proposed location of the replacement wharf at 63 Field Road, subject to the following condition of approval. This approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposal and plans contained in the application, and supporting documents submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. Any variation from the plan, proposals, and supporting documents, except a minimalist changes, as determined by the town planner, that do not affect approval standards, is subject to the review and approval of the planning board.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion? Does anyone want to place any further conditions on that approval?
I was thinking perhaps, because we are dealing with zero inches to the property boundary, maybe a condition of approval that says the surveyor's going to come out and, and lay out the property boundary before the replacement pier is, is constructed. Just to make sure that we are, we're making sure that the replacement pier is in the accurate location.
Thank you.
That was just a thought that I had, part, as part of this discussion.
That's a good one. Okay. Does everybody, everybody get that? Everybody agree? Okay.
But I do think Charles, Charles maybe in the audience had, had something. Do you want us to bring you a microphone?
All right.
Okay.
He's hiding behind the.
My name is Charles Saunders. I heard you say 60 on, on Field Road, where the actual address is 28. Am I correct? In your proposal that you just got to read.
Oh, he does say 63. You're correct. It does say 63.
Look at that.
You are correct.
Thank you.
Should be 23.
Corrections are in order.
28.
28, right. Thank you. All right. You read it from.
Oh, he is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Point of order.
Okay, so we'll correct that to 28 Field Road, subject to the first condition. And would you just read the second condition that you, that you suggested, so that we're all on, on board with that?
Maybe, prior to the removal and replacement of the pier, a licensed surveyor will delineate the property boundary with map 63, Lot 63. Unless our town attorney has something better.
Can we also ask that it be submitted to the Registry of Deeds?
I don't, I don't think that he, he, it's a stamped plan, so it's going to be accurate whether or not it goes to the.
Yes, and, and plans actually usually are not recorded in the registry, except for subdivision plans, or for larger development plans. And the registry actually doesn't really love to have them recorded.
Okay.
Except for those. It can be, but I wouldn't recommend it as a condition of approval.
Okay.
As part of the litigation, or part of any, if there were a settlement, in this case, they may choose to do it, but I would not recommend that the board require it.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just to clarify, yeah, that it was map 63, Lot 77.
63, uh, map 63, Lot 63 is the abutter.
Oh, okay, the abutter, okay. Thank you, my apologies.
It's Gilley Hunter's property.
All right, we have a motion that has been seconded. It has two conditions of approval. Any more discussion?
Can you read the conditions for me?
Yes. The first condition you should have, do you have that?
Yeah, I have that.
The second condition is, prior to removal and replacement of the pier, a licensed surveyor will delineate the property boundary.
With map 63, Lot 63.
For map 63, Lot 63.
So does that, I'm just, does that go against the fact that we're not supposed to be waiting? I'm just trying to understand, not supposed to be waiting for a property dispute? Or that's just our way of saying, I guess I just need some clarification on that.
It's, sorry, it's not, I don't think I've ever said my name, Natalie Burns. It, it is not unusual for a planning board to require, as part of the construction process, that this happened, just to be sure.
Thank you. I, thank you. I'm new.
I just would hate if the, if the dock construction, if the dock construction team got out there, and they put it, and what if it was wrong by a foot, you know?
Yeah.
This way, there can be a little more, an exact thing to measure off of.
Yep, okay. All right, all those in favor?
Oh, roll call.
Yeah, we have to do a roll call. That's why I was pointing at Lori.
Lori, aye.
Heather, aye.
Amy, aye.
Dan, aye.
Courtney, aye.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. That was, does anybody need to take a little break?
We'll have to take just a break for everybody in the lobby to be.
Okay, we're going to take a five minute. Get our things in order. Non-conforming structure. This is a, um, a lot that is completely within the Resource Protection zoning district. And I'm going to ask the planner, who has given us a memo dated September 12th, from herself to the DEP Shoreland zoning coordinator, Jeff Kalinich, with two questions. And I wonder, Margaret, if you would just summarize that for us, and anything else you'd like to add?
I would first like to add my site walk notes.
Oh, yes.
In the secretary's absence, I took some notes from the site walk. I'll just read them really fast. The site walk for 59 Potts Point was on September 8th. Present at the site walk was Tim Clark, the code officer, me, the town planner, board members Amy and Courtney. The applicants, Dennis from Country Fair, Emily from Main Land Development Consultants, and Sam from Curtis Custom Carpentry and Abutters, Linda Hall and David Anderson. My notes say that the applicant showed the proposed location of the reconstruction, the existing and proposed septic. The lot is developed with a house with a deck and a detached shed. The lot is almost exclusively vegetated with grass. There's a concrete retaining wall along the coastal wetland, which extends a few feet above grade. The new house will be elevated to be out above the flood zone. The abutting home to the north was raised within the last year, which is a good example to show how the replacement structure may look.
Thank you.
Just for any of the board members or the public who was, were not able to attend.
Thank you.
Now, on to the second half of your question. Which was, you want me to read it?
You can read it, or summarize it, whichever is, so, you'd like. You can read it or summarize it, whichever is, so, you'd like.
I had, in my review of this application, I had kind of two questions for Jeff Kalinic, which is the main DE, our DEP Shoreland Zoning Coordinator. So, all questions Shoreland Zoning, I send them to him. My first question was, in this replacement application, they show the, they show a relocated, expanded structure. And I said, when conducting a greatest practical extent review, should we first be reviewing the relocation of the structure and then reviewing the expansion of the structure? And he said, yes, the existing structure needs to be relocated to the greatest practical extent, and then the expansion is denied, designed. And then my second question is, what's the correct ordinance provision to apply when considering the application to expand in the resource protection zone? Should it be Shoreland Zoning Ordinance Section 13.1.1, which doesn't really apply because it's specific to new structures within resource protection? And he said, essentially, the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance is missing a key standard from Chapter 1000, the DEP Guidelines for Municipal Shoreland Zoning Ordinances. The standard that we're missing outlines the rules for an expansion of a structure in the resource protection zone. That memo and my emails with Jeff are both available on our website under Planning Board Pending Applications, if anybody wants to look them up. So, I feel like usually the board doesn't get bogged down by Shoreland Zoning questions. Usually they're answered before it gets to you, but it was kind of really in the review of the application that these questions came up and it had already been applied. So, here we are discussing them.
So, just, I guess a threshold question would be, is it your recommendation that we review this as a package? Or do it in a series of steps?
I think, greatest practical extent, you're supposed to first look at the relocation of the existing footprint and then look at the expansion. So, I think that this needs to be separated into two separate applications. Not two separate applications, but two steps, like you said. But I do think, I emailed all this to the applicant, and Emily did provide a response that maybe she wants to, to talk about. I see she's ready.
Yeah.
To talk this up to the podium. It is, it is a discussion that we should have. Yeah.
Can I ask a question before that? If this is being relocated entirely, it's, it's, the foundation is not going to be used. The whole thing is going to be moved. Does this not qualify as a new construction? Because it's a completely new structure that is on a completely new foundation? That's my question.
The answer is it's a replacement. So, the structure will be new, but it's replacing an existing structure. So, it's not a brand-new house in resource protection. It's a replacement house.
Yeah. It was, I, I read the, I read the ordinances. I was like, I need help. So, thank you.
Any other questions from the board preliminarily? Before we hear from the applicant? What we'll do is we'll hear from the applicant. The board can ask questions. Then we'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak, and then the board will continue its deliberations. Okay? So, please.
Sounds good. Do you want me to give you a whole spiel about the project? Or just?
Would you?
All right. Yep. Yes. Good point. I'm Emily with Mainland Development Consultants, with Dennis from Country Fair, representing the Paris family. Would you guys like me to give you the, my whole spiel about the project? Or just specifically the questions regarding the resource protection?
You could give us some background.
Okay. That's what I prepared, so that makes it better. Yeah. All right. So, the existing structure that is, it's right here, for those of you who aren't familiar with the site, was heavily damaged in recent flooding and storm events. It's located only 10.8 feet from the highest annual tide. To mitigate issues and make this beautiful property usable again, we're proposing reconstructing it further back. We're proposing, sorry, I keep walking away from the mic. I'm not used to this. To go back to the 25-foot setback off of the right-of-way road and from the side back, setback here. The structure will take up a majority of the buildable area. There is a steep drainage swale directly next to the house, just to get water away from the foundation and the piers and whatnot. And then the driveway, the well, and then the other property line. There's more constraints and details regarding this placement in my last letter. So, if you guys have any questions further, just feel free to let me know. We are proposing a small expansion to accommodate the mechanical and utilities that are right now, or were underneath the crawl space, underneath the existing cabin. We need to raise those to meet flood standards. The deck, we're proposing to remain the same exact size. There will be a few more steps. The house width is relatively the same. So, that's why we were kind of hoping to review this simultaneously as the width in the proposed structure and the existing structure in terms of greatest, greatest practical extent are very similar. The expansion we're proposing is 12% of the footprint, within the allowable 30%. I know in the memo that, the draft memo, that there was a statement regarding the expansions are prohibited in resource protection zones. And we believe that they are allowed for a few reasons. There's no language in Section 10.3 prohibiting any restrictions within zones. In Section 10.4, it reads, expansions of nonconforming institutional uses in the resource protection district are prohibited. I know that use doesn't apply here, obviously. It's not a school or anything. But it alludes to the fact that expansions in the resource protection zone are allowed and that 10.3 would have had similar language if it was prohibiting it. And 10.1, Chapter 1000 from DEP is also just a guideline. So, there might be inconsistencies between your code and theirs. This expansion, we're not proposing any increase of nonconformance. In fact, we're pushing it back. So, we're increasing the nonconform...
You're reducing the nonconformity.
Thank you. Backward, yes. It's going to be 47 feet further back from where it is now, in terms from the highest annual tide. For utilities, we're replacing the existing holding tank with a new septic system to mains substrate, subsurface waste codes, a new water line from the existing well. And lastly, as was mentioned, the structure will be raised to meet base flood elevations, placed on concrete piers with footings gowned into the bedrock. We know these shoreline zones and nonconforming lots are tricky. But hopefully, your jurisdictional review will be straightforward and we'll keep care for any questions if needed.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board? I would just note that the applicant could ask for a 30% increase. And that is not before us at this time. And I'm kind of convinced that this 12% for mechanical and utilities that were in the basement is pretty de minimis. But I, that's why I, I asked the planner for more explanation of why she thinks this should be in two, in two stages. And if you think it should be, then could you guide us on how we could do that tonight?
So, what got me started in, in thinking about how this applies to the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance is that Section 13.1.1 is just for new structures within resource protection, not replacement structures, new structures. And it limits the, it limits the footprint of structures on a single lot within resource protection to 1,500 square feet. And if you add up the footprint of the structures on this lot, it's going to be over 1,500 square feet. And that's really where it got my mind thinking, well, which, which provision kind of pervails? Are they limited to 1,500 or are they not?
Well, that applies to new construction. So, that's kind of...
But in the, this, in the section that we're missing from Chapter 1000, it limits you to 1,500.
Or 30%, whichever is greater.
I think it still limits you to 1,500, but...
I printed it out, I think. Okay. We've all got it.
It does say whichever is greater. I meant 13.3.1.3.2.
No. I have it here.
It's on, I guess I don't, I have his email. I don't have the actual chapter.
I really do, though.
1000. It says, may not be expanded to size greater than 1,500 square feet or 30% larger than footprint that existed at the time the resource protection district was established on the lot, which sounds like it was fairly recently swapped over, zone-wise.
I don't think so.
No? Okay.
Yeah. It's just the very end, and I don't, I have no idea why it's on resource protection. That's a question for another day. Just let me look at that. Oh, um, size greater than... Oh, you're right. It's 1,500 or 30%, whichever is greater. So, yeah, I, I don't, I hate to bring Shoreland Zoning questions in front of the board because it's not really your area of expertise. So, I, I, I'm not sure how you guys want to handle this.
Okay. Well, if you don't have a firm recommendation...
I mean, I, I do, but I don't think anybody's going to really like it, which is, so there's, there's two issues. One, I think that we need to look at this in two parts. One, the relocation. Two, the expansion. And the second issue is that the greatest practical extent language in the ordinance limits us to a 40-day review period. So, if we table it and come back, then we'll be over the 40 days.
Okay. I'm getting, I'm sort of getting some, some...
Can we do both of them? Try both of them tonight? Just one and then followed by the other?
So, it's, it's, the expansion of the 30%, making that house longer, deeper, is making it less conforming to the 75-foot setback. And that's really the issue, I feel like.
But the nonconformance is based on the existing structure, according to the definition, not, not the, not the new location at the greatest extent possible. It's based off of the existing, according to the definition. I know, it's wordy.
Okay.
I think that we need further guidance from either the code office, the Shoreland Zoning Coordinator, or the town attorney.
Okay. Let me ask Dan, who is our resident attorney on the board, whether he has any comments.
I wish I had been on the site walk. That would have been, that would have been very helpful. Yeah. I think the big, the biggest problem is that we're missing, we're missing a provision in our ordinance. And, and to what extent then do the state requirements apply to it? I think, they can kind of, that thing can kind of go both ways. And that's a place where I think we really need to have, have a legal opinion on that. Because I, you know, I, I can see, I can see, I can see it being read both ways.
Just the, the, I know the nonconforming use doesn't apply here, but just the language in that section makes me think expansions are allowed in the resource protection zone, just the way it's worded. I don't know if you guys took a minute. I know I said that in my long spiel. It might be worth reading that section, just to read your thoughts. That is 10.4.1.
And I agree with you. However, we, I asked Jeff Kalinic. We all have the, his response, which is, it, it doesn't apply to resource protection because we specifically don't allow it.
But there's no wording in your ordinance to say otherwise.
I agree. That's why I feel like maybe we need some further guidance.
If it's at the state level, doesn't that supersede the fact that it doesn't exist in ours?
That is true. There is a word in, earlier in your ordinance. It says inconsistencies shall control, ugh. Basically, at the end of it, it says unless state shoreline zone provides otherwise. So, if there's inconsistencies with your ordinance as being, saying that the state guidelines supersede.
Yeah. I, I don't think that the, I don't think that the, that the response from the state really answered the questions that we have here. Especially considering your response. And I would love to hear what, what they say in response to your, to your analysis of this. Because I, you know, I, I just think we, we need to be on much stronger footing if we're going to, when we're going to do this.
Okay. I, I was prepared to move forward, but, and I'm sorry that, I guess I feel a little chagrin for the applicant and, and for the board as well. Because if we knew this question was going to come up and that an attorney's opinion might be warranted, then we should get that opinion before we get this far. So, I just want to say, I hope that, Margaret, that you, I know that you want to make sure that you don't overburden the, the budget with the town attorney's opinions. But that before we get this far, we should, you should be able to tell us. I took, I spoke with the town attorney about this issue, and this is what they said.
Yeah. I, I feel like the Shoreland Zoning Coordinator already answered the question. But if the board wants it, an attorney's opinion, then we can do that.
Yeah. I, you know, I think Margaret pursued that diligently. You know, she made the request on September 5.
Yeah.
It took, it took 10 days for us to get it back. And then the applicant only has a couple of days to respond to.
That's true.
It's a tight timeline.
Yeah. Very tight timeline. And I think, I just, yeah. I just don't feel comfortable moving forward on it right now.
Okay. So, can you, for the record, articulate the question that you would like to have answered?
I'm going to ask you to articulate it. Because you're the one who's...
I'm not going to articulate it.
No.
I just feel like there could be a conversation between the applicant, the town, and the DEP. And maybe we could get some sort of a confirmation or questions or, you know, just like a, yeah.
I think, yeah. I think that would make sense. You know, rather than, rather than listing specific questions that we have, have them convene on it and talk about, and come to, and come to a resolution about, among them.
Okay. So, I have another...
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
And maybe just, I'm looking at it, because I'm not an expert, but I'm looking at 10.3.2.2, which is reconstruction or replacement more than 50% of value. This is replacing the existing structure. It's, I would think, because it's a complete tear-down and rebuild, it's a more than 50% value. And it does allow for some, if I'm reading this correctly. So, I make your input. Read it over. Am I looking at this correctly? Or maybe does allow for some expansion?
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm going to try another trap, another tact. This is before us for jurisdictional review. We, we can decide whether we want to take jurisdiction of this or remand it to the codes office. So, I would like to ask our codes officer if he feels comfortable with us remanding it. I don't want to put you on a spot, Tim, but I'd like to ask your opinion about remanding it to codes. Okay. So, that's another option, is to remand it to codes. Let codes go through these...
Motion.
This discussion. If it's warranted, it can come back to us. Otherwise, the codes, just between the codes and, and the applicant.
I think timing purposes, that would be better. Just with your monthly schedule, that would be our preference as well.
Yeah. We understand.
I was thinking if it did, if we did want to review it, we could meet again in two weeks. Yeah, we could try that, if we could get some answers.
Okay, how does the board feel about continuing with review or remanding it to Codes? Those are our two options.
It sounds like Codes is comfortable. Correct?
Yes.
Come up and state your name and.
Yeah, I can move out of the way.
Hi, I'm Linda Whitehall. My family's owned the cottage next door to this one for 85 years. A long time, they're great neighbors. But I have a whole bunch of questions that I.
Talking to the mic?
Sorry. I have a whole bunch of questions that I would like answered before you make a decision about which way this is going to go.
That's fair, absolutely, thank you.
I guess my first question is, how was the percent increase calculated? Because I came up with a quite different number, and I have a master's degree in math.
I, the calculations are, sorry. The calculations were provided on the narrative section, right on that, on, right at the beginning of the application. It was the footprint of the eaves of the house. I did have to subtract a little bit where the eaves overlapped the porch or the deck. Plus the decks and the steps, and it was 12% of that.
So what, I'm sorry, may I speak?
Yeah.
In my left just.
Yep, yep.
So on the town's website, under the appraisal section, it has this building as 28 feet by 28 feet.
And I believe that's inside, like square footage, they have large overhangs.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think like, whole feet.
Yeah, the four foot overhangs.
Four, so the four foot overhangs count as part of the footprint. All right, so, so it's now 32 by 32, you're saying. And I don't calculate that anymore.
Oh, come on. I do have the, the.
But I would still say, I'd still say it's more than 12%, but. So at any rate, so I want to get a definite answer about that. You've already answered, I had a question about it being 75 feet from the water and it's not, it's about 58, you said, yeah. Okay, so then, as a butters, my family has a concern, and we love her. They're putting in a septic. Our well is about 60 feet from that, I guess that's okay, because it's been approved. This isn't working?
Oh, it's, it's working, but it's not giving you out.
All right, oh darn. Okay, so the question is, that area is very prone to flooding, whether there's an ocean flooding effect or a lot of rain. So that the water goes into the lawn there. How does that affect the, I don't know, the leach field, I guess it's called, of the septic? And is there something we can do as a butters to make sure that it doesn't affect our well water?
That's a valid question. They have submitted a septic design and that is something that we aren't really qualified.
So who, who?
That would be Codes.
That's Codes, and he mentioned at the site visit that these things are great. I'm asking this on behalf of my brothers, who are both engineers, and they weren't so sure, but, yeah, I just, I don't, so I have, they should talk to Tim, is that what?
Yep.
You love talking to my brothers, right? Okay, so I think, I think that covers my question. Is there a height issue when you raise it up on pillars? I just wanted.
That's a good question. Margaret, do you want to address that?
State law allows you to lift up your house at minimum three feet or whatever the height is that allows you to get your house up out of the flood zone. That was a state law that was passed a couple of years ago.
Three feet or if needed more, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want, because we're probably going to have to do that sometime soon too.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your interest.
I'm comfortable remanding it to Codes at this point.
Well, I'm just glad to hear that. Good. I am, all right. So, let's see, do you want to make a motion, Dan?
Yeah, I, I moved that the Planning Board declines taking jurisdiction and remands this matter to Codes.
I'll second that. Uh, sorry, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
No, we have to do, oh.
Lori, aye.
Heather, aye.
Amy, aye.
Dan, aye.
Courtney, aye.
All right. Thank you. Excellent, very good.
Thank you, nice presentation.
Yes, thank you very much. I wish every application was as well done as, as this one. I love it, it makes our job so much easier. All right. It's up to a lot of paper and a lot of stuff.
Sometimes I feel like we dump everything on Tim.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project.
Thanks. Two years in the making.
Yeah, well, that storm was, that was a kicker. All right, our next application is. It's really two, I don't, I'm not sure whether we're going to go through both of these at the same time. It's 250902 and 250903, the same applicant, Andrew and Elizabeth Ziegler, map 18, lot 109, 10906 Harpswell Neck Road, the former Estes property. It is before us for consideration of a change of use of a nonconforming structure, and then also site plan review. So we have this under, on the agenda, under two separate items. Would you like to explain why that is, Margaret, and how you'd like us to proceed?
Yes, I feel like the change in use of a nonconforming structure is more of a threshold issue the board should consider prior to considering the site plan review. That's, so they really, I put them all in one document, so they'd all be in the same place, but really they are two separate issues. The Shoreland Zoning Ordinance requires the Planning Board to consider the change of use of a nonconforming structure, and then they want to open an artist collective, so that would be step two. And I do have some site plan notes, would you like to hear them? Uh, some, some site visit notes.
Yes, thank you.
We visited the site on September 8. Present was Tim Clark, the Code Officer, me, the Town Planner, board members Amy and Courtney, the property owners Andrew and Elizabeth, and Linda Hall, the butter, she was at both of them. The group walked around the exterior of the building, looking at the proposed location of the food trucks on the south end of the building. The owner showed spots in the pavement needing repair due to undermining during storms. It was observed that the access to the upstairs is by the exterior stairs on the north end of the building. This will be the access to the artist, artist studio spaces. The board members inquired about flood damage due to 2024 storms. Owner reported little if any known interior flood damage.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have two items before us. The rec, first is the request, so we're going to need several votes here. The first is, oh, the other thing I wanted to ask was our timing. But I'll, I'll ask it in a bit. So Section 10.3.3 of the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance requires that any change of use of a nonconforming structure, which this is, is allowed only after the Planning Board determines that the new use will have no greater impact on a stream, a tributary stream, a coastal wetland, or freshwater let, wetland, or on adjacent properties. So, in determining that no greater adverse impact will occur, the board has to review written documentation from the applicant regarding the probable effects on public health, safety, erosion, sedimentation, water quality, fish, wildlife habitat, vegetative cuff, cover, a number of other different things, natural beauty, flood paint, plane management. And the planner recommends that, given that the applicant plans to utilize the existing infrastructure on the property, the existing septic system, and proposes no changes to the lot, it's reasonable that the board find that the proposed change of use meets the standards of Section 10.3.3. So, I am going to move, make a motion, actually, I'm not going to do that yet. I'm, I'm going to ask if the applicant has anything, well, does the Planning Board have anything that they want to ask, Margaret?
I just wanted to add, some of the history of the lot was included in the draft motions. This did come in front of the board for the same exact change of use of a nonconforming structure review when Larry Crooker, the previous owner, was getting ready to sell the property. He was trying to market, this is my opinion, but he was trying to market it as a residence or the, have the ability to be residential. So he came in front of the board and asked for this approval to be, the same exact approval, so he could make it into a residential use, which the board granted, but it never became a residential use.
Right.
So in my opinion, we are still comparing the current, the proposed use against the restaurant use, because it has never been anything else.
Okay.
So that's a little confusing, given the history of this property, everything's confusing.
Yeah. I have some, some questions about the change of use and our, the things that we are responsible for, because the change of use is going to be for an artist studio. And there are, there are lots of chemicals used in an artist's studio that are corrosive and hazardous, and we don't really know what those are. We don't know what they will be. And I want to just put that out there for the board, because we are required to look at this change of use in terms of public health and safety and water quality and fish and wildlife habitat. So we have to look at the change of use and then we have to look at the site plan. But before we do the, before we do anything, I just want to know if the board has any issues or questions that they'd like to ask the applicant, or Margaret, or just discuss amongst ourselves. Normally what I will do, if the board doesn't, is I'll ask the applicant to make their presentation and then the board can ask questions as well.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to have the applicant explain what they're going to be doing to get that on the record.
Good.
So we can determine what kind of a change of use there is and whether it's consistent.
Perfect. Would you like to make your presentation?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, so state your name and.
Finally, huh?
Yeah.
He's been waiting since 5:30 for this.
I have, I've been waiting a long time for this, I'm very excited to be here. My name's Andy Ziegler, and my beautiful wife Liz is on Zoom here today. So we are very excited to start to add some value back to Harpswell in the form of an event space, an artist's studio, food trucks, and bring this into what we're calling the Harpswell Collective. And to, would you like me to answer the question directly that you just proposed about the? Yeah, so fundamentally, we don't know specifically what's going to be in there for artist studios yet, what the mediums are going to be and so forth, but the plans are 100% to mitigate any water use, put in any needed filters, et cetera. Most of what we're seeing coming in are related to painting. So, you know, rinsing of brushes and things might be a concern to the Planning Board, or, you know, things like that. There are mitigation filters and things that we can put into place there. I need to do a little bit more research in terms of what specifically those are, but it doesn't matter what those are, they're going to be in place. So we, we do not plan to go around any of those rules. We plan to, you know, be very specifically action oriented around taking care of that stuff. I have friends that are involved in the, what is it, the EPA? I think it's the EPA, Environmental Protection, that we're going to consult on these things and make sure that we're doing things right. So I want to take that concern off the table, that any needed hazardous waste issues will be addressed. We will not mess around with that kind of thing. So we don't have a specific plan to answer the question. Liz, I don't know if you want to add any more color to that, but fundamentally, we're going to follow the rules and find out what we need and put it in.
That was right. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Ziegler. Mr. Sir, would you come up and state your name for the record, or, or someone can hand you the.
My concern is, in your planning and your pro forma, do you have any idea from a revenue standpoint how many food trucks we're talking about in terms of what you plan?
Yes, I do.
And what you, how you would manage that?
Yes, so we're planning on having two food trucks to start.
To the mic.
Sure.
We're planning on having two food trucks to start, if we can, you know, solicit a couple of food trucks. Uh, we have interest already from a, a local business, I don't want to name them yet because they're not signed up, but one of the existing restaurants in town was, was interested in expanding to a food truck and moving down. So we're intending to put those behind the fence that we have there, in the existing space, on the asphalt that's already there, so it won't impact permeable, impermeable areas, and we intend to be, you know, right up front. We want to make it fun for everybody down there, and we don't want to cause a lot of problems.
Is the microphone somewhere that we can just pass it around?
We lost it.
We lost it.
As you plan forward, and obviously, we're the, we're the butters and neighbors, and we'd like to see the property used properly. And a concern is, too much in too little space. And food trucks bring that question to me. So I guess, what part of your total revenue plans are food trucks?
Sure.
And what part is the art and exhibition part?
Sure.
Could you be kind enough to state your name, sir? I, I don't think we got it, did we?
Are you hearing me?
Kind of.
Did you hear what I said?
Yes, we heard what you said, I just want you to state your name, if you could speak it.
My name is Dave Baraboe, and I live 1884 Harpswell Neck, which is two houses down.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, Dave, happy to answer that question. So one of the concerns, I think, is the traffic and things like that, and we paid specific attention, thanks to Margaret's guidance, on parking and making sure that we are not going to provide enough spaces for people to sit down to cause too much traffic. So we're limited by the parking there, as you know, when Estes was sold, the lot across the street used to be parking, and that's part of the reason why you can't have a restaurant there, right? So we were very, very specific around how we're going after building out, you know, the, the Harpswell Collective. The, to answer your question, most of our revenue is going to come from the rental studios on the second floor. The revenue from the food trucks will be relatively minimum, minimal, excuse me. The parking associated with that was relatively small. The number of seats is limited to the amount of parking spaces that we have. So we will not be running anything simultaneously that will go over the allowable parking spaces unless we have the ability to shuttle people in. So for example, if we held an event that needed to go a little bit above the required parking spaces, we would have the person that was hosting those events require them to, to have a van to transport people in from outside. So we won't, we don't want to mess with the local traffic, we don't want to overburden the street. We want to make sure that we're sticking within the rules.
Okay.
Of course, we want to make our neighbors happy too.
Okay.
That answers my use question.
That answers your use question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can you explain why? That answers your use question, and what was your use question?
Well, to, to say whether the, whether the use would be, the change of, whether the change of use would be such that it would not overburden. And, you know, it's the same kind, it's both, it's still a commercial use, so we don't have a change in the character of the property. He's explained what it looks like in terms of, of parking and all that. So I, I think, I think the first part is met.
Okay. Anybody else have any? I wanted to say note for the record, though, that in terms of public health and safety, you, you are committed to getting. you, you are committed to getting a septic system addition or some kind of protection that will, or treatment system that will protect water quality.
Absolutely. Not, not septic system, we'll try to do that inside and have some sort of, you know, if we need a hazardous, hazardous waste disposal methodology, we'll put that in.
And so, but we don't know what that is yet.
Correct.
So, that will have to be part of your final plan.
No problem.
You'll have to tell us what that is, so that we know what we're approving.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, are we ready to do the change of use now, or?
I might be able to answer that question right now. I did a little bit of research, and there's something called a press filter or something like that that goes underneath the sink, that a lot, basically filters out paint from water. And that is one probable option that we'll put in place, as paint will be the largest contributor to what we're discussing here.
Yep, yep, okay. Thank you very much for that.
Going back to paints just for a minute, because not all paints are water soluble. So, obviously, you're going to have acetones, mineral spirits, things that, what about those type of chemicals?
If we have those, we will have a, you know, make sure we put those to code in terms of how to store them, how to dispose of them, et cetera.
Okay.
But they won't go down the drain.
Yeah, please don't. Just making sure.
Yeah, it's a real, you know, just important fisheries habitat.
Absolutely.
So, we, we know that you're, that you mean what you're saying, but what we have faced in the past, and I'm not, I'm not looking at your direction in any really, in any way that is accusatory, but, and we have approved stuff based on, I will do this and I will do that, and it hasn't been in the final plan, and then it doesn't get done. And, or five years later, we go back and find that it was never done. And we have nothing on record that really shows us what was promised. So, that's why I'm making it really clear that it will need to be in the final plan.
Understood. Can I ask almost a favor? So, we don't know yet what's going to be in there, because they haven't been rented to the artists yet. So, we don't know what types of paints are going to be used. They could be all watercolor, I doubt it. One of our artists is sitting right here with us today, and I think she uses acrylics. But since we don't know, I would like to, you know, as we bring in the types of artists, collaborate with the town to understand what is needed from a codes perspective or from a waste disposal perspective, to be able to move forward with that.
I guess what I would suggest, and I'm not the final say in this, but is go for the, you're most conservative, that means you're most proactive treatment, and let us know what that would be.
So, there's a major difference in expense between the most conservative and the most probable. So, I would like to push back on that a little bit.
Okay, so, tell us what those are, you know, maybe tell us what those are, and then, then we'll know more about what we're talking about.
Sure, so the most probable is the acrylic paint disposal and things like that, where we wouldn't need things like the acetones and other types of chemical, you know, solvents and so forth. That's the most probable medium that's going to be in the collective. So, the disposal associated with that, from the research that I've done, is essentially a trap that goes underneath the sink. I forget the specific name, but it basically takes the solids out of the water associated with the paint. And something like that runs between $200 and $400. Some of the other disposal, you know, hazardous waste disposals and things are monthly fees that are thousands of dollars. They require cabinetry that are thousands of dollars to store. So, you know, if I have my way and my wife has her way, I don't think we're going to allow, you know, crazy spray paints and things like that in the, but, you know, if we do, we would certainly put it in.
I think we're just looking for your commitment.
Oh, absolutely.
You've got our commitment, and we'll, we'll circle back with our, with our specifics and our final plan, for sure.
Yeah, that's, you mean, if somebody approaches you who wants to do something bizarre, you say, sorry, we don't.
We can't do that, we can't accommodate that, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's, that's all we're looking for, is, you know, will you commit to doing what's necessary for the folks that you have?
100%, I'll go even beyond that, you know, we want to do what's right for our town. We're not trying to, you know, bend any rules, we're not trying to do anything like that, we're trying to do it right. So, absolutely, I have 100% commitment on that. I don't know if those brownies are for us, but they look delicious.
Okay, are we ready for a motion? Okay, I will move that the planning board finds that the applicants Andrew and Elizabeth Ziegler have demonstrated that the change of use of the nonconforming structure at 1906 Harpswell Neck Road, map 18 lot 108, from a commercial restaurant used to an artist's collective with food trucks, will have no greater impact on the adjacent coastal wetland or on the subject or adjacent properties and resources than the existing use, provided that they demonstrate that they have installed and maintained, what's the language that I'm looking for?
Permeation.
Permeation or something?
The appropriate pre-treatment for all material that would normally go down the drain on the property as a result of artist's use. Do we get that?
Sure.
Okay. That's my, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
No, we have to do. Lori, aye.
Heather, aye.
Amy, aye.
Dan, aye.
Courtney, aye.
Thank you. All right.
I feel like another way to handle that would, like, for solvents and stuff, he could have a carry-in, carry-out policy for his artists. There would be no way for any of us to police that, or the code office to be able to ensure compliance, but it could be an option for him, so they don't have to dispose of those chemicals.
That's a good idea. But, I mean, we, we can, whatever makes sense, we can do. So, I like that idea, because I think that's easiest for everybody, but we're happy to do whatever's needed.
Yeah, that's likely a yes and, so we'll, we'll come back to you guys with a final on probably contract structuring that asks and kind of demands that of our artist, and then we'll also have a physical filter and disposal in place.
Thank you. Okay. You know, as things, as things get going, and, I mean, I do it. I, I, you know, I know I shouldn't be using bleach in my, my washing machine and my septic system, but sometimes I do. So, we all.
I'm taking notes, Amy, I'm taking notes.
Okay, site plan review, conformance with submission requirements. All right, so, applications for site plan review have to be submitted on forms provided by the codes office. And prior to review of the application's conformance with those standards, the board has to find that the application is complete. So, that's what we're doing right now. There were waivers requested, which are allowed to be requested by the applicant, and I'm just going to read those off. 14.2.8, the location of unique site features. 14.2.9, existing surface water drainage. 14.3.2, proposed surface water drainage. 14.3.4, location and materials to be used in construction of the driveway. 14.3.6, location and dimensions of proposed structures. And 14.3.13, stormwater calculations. The recommendation from the planner is to waive those requirements, because there really aren't any changes to this proposed property. So, I will move that the planning board waives the requested submission requirements, because the information is not required to determine compliance with the approval standards. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Any discussion? No, all right, all those in favor?
Lori, aye.
Heather, aye.
Amy, aye.
Dan, aye.
Courtney, aye.
Finally, I remembered. All right, so, the board has just determined that your application is complete. So, now we have a motion.
No, no, we just did the waivers.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, we just did the waivers.
Yeah.
Thank you, there's a lot going on up here. All right, so.
Do you want me to move that?
That is the next motion, that is motion two, yes, please.
I move that the planning board finds that the application of Andrew Ziegler for the change of use of an existing non-residential building meets the submission requirements of section 14 of the site plan review ordinance, and therefore, the application is considered to be complete.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, all right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Lori, aye.
Heather, aye.
Amy, aye.
Dan, aye.
Courtney, aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Amy, I feel like the confusion is usually those two things are combined into one motion, but for some reason, I felt like it was more clear to do it in separate ones, so.
Yeah.
Usually, they're one.
Well, the existence of waivers was something that we should really consider separately, anyway.
That's what I thought.
It's all right. It's been a long night. It hasn't really, but. Okay, usually, when I go through stuff, I tell myself I know how, what I'm going to do and in what order it is, but. All right, so, we now have a second, a third set of things that we have to go through, which are the findings of fact and conformance with the standards. We're going to go through each one of these, and as we go through them, I'm, first of all, someone will make a motion, probably I will make a motion, or Dan, and will, somebody will second it, and then we're going to have discussion about all of these different review standards. And as we discuss the review standards, we may establish conditions, further conditions, for the applicant in order to approve the project. Some of those conditions may be handled through the codes, and some of them may be that you have to give them to Margaret before you, you can do anything further.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Chairperson, since there, there, from the recommendations of the planner, it looks like she is recommending that the standards for everything except one are met.
That is true.
So, I think it might make sense to deal directly with the one where there's a question of an application, rather than going through everything and hitting that. Hitting that one, and if we can resolve that, then we can take care of the others a little bit more expeditiously.
Okay, I think that's true, and that's, has everyone read through this, and you ready to do that? All right, so, I will move that the planning board finds that the application of Andrew and Elizabeth Ziegler does not meet the following approval standards of section 15 of the site plan review ordinance, based on the following findings that are incorporated into this motion by reference. And I will just read them, 15.1, 15.2, 15.3, 15.3.2, 15.4, 15.5, 15.6, 15.7, in its entirety, 15.8, 15.9, 15.10, 15.11, 15.12.
Nope, not 12.
And that is up for discussion, so that is a.
No, no, you just said that they, it does not meet the standards.
Right, it does not meet the standards.
But those do meet the standards.
Those are good.
Thank goodness.
That's true.
Amy.
All right, here, what I think we can do is to say, oh, hold on, let me get back here, okay.
Could I pause the conversation, is that allowed?
I'm, I'm, it is, but let us, let us store things, thank you. I think.
It sounds, it sounds strange right now, but we'll get to the, get to the question.
Got it, okay.
What I really should do is, what someone should do, I'm going to take back my motion.
Well, it wasn't seconded.
It wasn't seconded. So, what we should do is say, is recommend that they are complete, with, with that one exception. Is that what you're thinking?
Shouldn't you still reference them?
Well, I think, let's, let's take care of the 15.1 through 15.11 first. No, no, hold on a second.
This is why I don't really like making a motion, I like to just go through everything without making a motion first.
Yeah, the reason why we make a motion is to get the, is to get it on the table. So, it's one of those basic Robert's Rules things. So, if we, we put the motion on the table, that doesn't mean that that's the way we're going to end up. But what I would do then is to say, and we're going to be going through, so if there are questions about specific things, we can look later. So, I move that the planning board finds that the application of Andrew and Elizabeth Ziegler meets the, the following approval standards of section 15 of the site plan review ordinance, based on the following findings that are incorporated into this motion by reference, and that includes 15.1 through 15 point, where are we here?
15.9?
11.
15.11.
Yeah, 15.11.
No, I was going to do the whole thing.
Well, this one still says not down here.
Yeah, but we'll deal.
Which we'll be dealing with, I don't, it's a logical thing, I don't know why we can't deal with that one first, since we got more information, but that's just me being logical.
That's actually a very good point.
I agree with you, Courtney.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
Okay.
All right.
Because then we could go back through.
Your motion hasn't been seconded, I just want to have this open for discussion. No motions, open for discussion. And I'd like to focus, because the planner recommends that the, most of the standards have been met, so let's just open this for discussion on 15.12 subsurface waste disposal. The planner recommends that that, that that requirement is not met based on the following findings. A replacement disposal field was installed to serve the restaurant in 2010. A seasonal septic system is rated for 1,260 gallons per day, and the artist's collective will use approximately 1,602 gallons per day, which is 342 gallons per day, more than the system is designed to handle.
So, can you, there was something else that was added to the documents. It was a little tiny thing that showed septic use, which seemed to make it fall below the 1,260. It was like 900 and something, so it sounds to me, if that was, I assume you put that in there? Where'd that come from?
The applicant.
Okay.
In response to the draft motion.
Okay, so, if that is so, if it's now 962, it seems that it is within the allotted amount, so it should be okay. Says a logical person.
I can, I can provide some color if it's helpful. So, the original.
They're going to provide some color for the septic system.
Lovely.
That was funny. So, the numbers that were originally created, I'm looking these things up from main standards. This is a, you know, multi-use facility, so I was trying to be conservative in those numbers. They came back quite high, and I didn't realize they were above the capacity when I pulled the numbers together. After reviewing them a second time, you know, there's, a lot of those rules are designed around the retail. The biggest drain on the water usage is around the retail space, which is fundamentally going to be the smallest usage out of anything in the collective. It's going to be staffed by one person. So, there's not going to be a whole lot of demand for septic for that one particular use. I'm going by what the standards were. So, I pulled some logic together to, to make it easier for everybody in here today. And if you can follow my logic, I'd appreciate it. But I wrote down some numbers. So, the average daily traffic in a 24-hour period for that road per the DOT is 674 cars.
Wow.
Right? The, per the National Household Survey, the average number of occupants per trip is one and a half people per car, essentially, right? So, if I assume, very excitedly, that 75. So if I assume, very excitedly, that 75% of these cars are going to come into the collective, and that one, six, out of the one and a half people per car, will use the facilities to go to the bathroom, that's 66% of the people that are going to use the restroom when they're there, and I assume that the maximum allowed gallons per flush is 1.3 gallons for new high-efficiency toilets, which it is, and which we would put in, that gets us to 506 people using the toilet from off the street at 1.3 gallons, that gets us up to 658 gallons per day. So we're way below what those things were saying, based upon just reasonable logic around the traffic in the area. So if we even went well above that and included all the folks upstairs and the standards around that, all, we included the food trucks, that gets us up to 1086, so we're still almost 20% below capacity, even on a very, very conservative number.
So that's average daily traffic. What is the peak traffic in the summer months, and how long does that last?
I'm glad you asked that question, Amy. So, the way they calculate peak traffic is, using a K factor, they call it, and they say it's supposed to be between 0.8 and 0, and .12, so 8% to 12% of the average daily traffic. And in that case, it's between 50, 51 and 88 cars per maximum peak traffic, so.
Except, the population in Harpswell doubles over the summertime, and I don't hear you taking that into account.
So even if the population does double, that 506 number becomes 1,012, which is still below the 1,260 that we have for capacity. Well below. And I was assuming 75% of the traffic actually goes into the collective.
It needs to go to the bathroom.
Yeah, it needs to, yeah.
So what was your peak, what was your peak number of gallons per day?
It was 506, using the average.
And what was it during peak, and that includes peak seasonal traffic?
It would be double that if you assume it's a double the average.
So 10,012?
No, 1,012.
Yeah, that's what I meant, sorry.
And that would assume, again, if 75% of the people going down Harpswell Neck Road came into the collective, which would be awesome, and that, you know, 66% of those people had to go to the bathroom, which are kind of very conservative numbers.
How many artists do you think you'll be able to have, having studios? They probably would like to use the facilities also.
Yep, so that number's included as well.
Okay.
So the number for that is 260 gallons for the folks upstairs.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm Maggie Baraboe, a neighbor. My question is, as I look out my window in, on the best day in the spring, when the snow is gone, and it goes right through till fall, there are people on, especially on the weekends, that they go down the road and they come back up the road because there's nothing since Estes closed. I think there are people from all over Maine that use Harpswell as a destination. How many food truck events will be happening? Will they become a permanent or semi-permanent addition, so that people will know that they're there and take a ride down to beautiful Harpswell and say, "Let's have lunch for dinner"?
We certainly hope so.
A lot of cars, where are they all going to park?
They're all going to park within the limitations of our parking lots.
Not a lot.
Not a lot, no. We don't anticipate the traffic being any more than it was with Estes or anything like that.
Yeah, I try to take that into consideration, but people keep coming.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I'd like to ask Margaret for her feedback, recommendations.
I think there's. All right. I, I think maybe there's a couple different ways you can handle this. One, go with his numbers. Another way it could be handled is he could hire a site evaluator licensed by the state to interpret the state's, you know, subsurface wastewater disposal rules and, and this site's compliance with those rules. A third way you could handle this is to have the town's consulting engineer review the application. You know, Andrew and I emailed a little bit, but traffic is not my forte, traffic engineering, and, and maybe we need the, the engineer to review the traffic, review the parking, review the septic. It's just really, I, just because there is so many uses there, it's really hard to pinpoint down.
It is.
For the average person, what, what's going to be the use, what's going to be the traffic, what's going to be the septic gallons per day?
So, Margaret, can I add some color to that as well?
Yeah, and those are just ideas.
Sure. So in terms of the traffic, so you asked me to go to the Maine Department of Transportation and ask that very question, and they came back and approved it, gave the permit for it. So I think, you know, they've, they've done the analysis based upon the information that's, we've shared together, and they came back and said it's approved.
I, I really appreciate your doing that. I will tell you, this is just my personal opinion, Maine DOT is meh sometimes. They don't really understand what's going on in Harpswell. They've approved stuff that, but I think Margaret's recommendation is a really good recommendation, and we could do that as a condition of approval if we wanted to. Which means you would, you could get approval, but you would have to satisfy this condition. And this is just, we do this fairly frequently. It's a peer review process, so even though we have an engineer, yourself, no, you know.
Who's also an engineer.
Yes, you're an engineer, that's what I was going to say. No casting asparagus or anything like that. It's just good to have another set of eyes that are really looking out from the town's perspective, that, you know, are really holding the zoning ordinance to their highest standard, and we, we feel really comfortable when we do that.
Sure thing. Yeah, we, I have a, I actually have a soil engineer on the hook. He just wasn't able to get to the project before tonight, so he's, you know, we're going back and forth on timing. He's hoping to come down on Friday, so I'm hoping to have, you know, more concrete nailed down. And just in case we're wondering here, if the answer does come back that we need to, need to make modifications to the septic, and it's just a leach, leach field that we're talking about here, and I've talked that over with my neighbor across the street, Phil, and I'm okay with expanding the leach field as needed within, within code, so if we do have to fall back on approval, you know, just know that if it comes higher, we're going to do what we need to do to expand the septic to meet code.
Okay, super, super. How does the board feel right now? What do you feel about?
I'm, I'm happy with, I'm happy with what we've talked about in terms of the septic and, and making that as a condition of approval. If we have no other questions on that, I'd like to hear if there's anyone else who has.
The only thing that I want to do, and I'd like to hear too, but the only thing I want to do is make sure that the conditions of approval are, are very clear, and that we all agree on what they are. So, Margaret, would you be willing to just take a minute and work on what you think conditions of approval might be for septic wastewater, and just for peer review? And I'm not asking you to do it off the top of your head, just, just, we can hear from the applicant, or hear from any of butters, or anyone else while you do that?
So you, you guys are discussing having the consulting engineer review the application for compliance with the subsurface wastewater disposal rules?
Yes.
Thank you. That, you just did it.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah.
For compliance.
Is that the engineer?
Amy's writing it down.
With subsurface wastewater.
Margaret, just a question. Is that the engineer that I'm hiring, or your internal engineer?
That, I, they're talking about our internal engineer, I believe. I mean, it's possible that his, his site evaluator who's coming down will give us the information, then we would have our consulting engineer review it.
You provide the information, rather than, rather than our engineer taking the initiative, you provide the information and he just reviews it.
No problem. Sure thing.
Yeah.
But you do have to pay for it.
Got it. You sure you don't want to pay for it, Amy?
I would, but my bank account's zero right now.
I just don't know if you guys are going to involve the consulting engineer if we also want to talk about trips per day and, and traffic.
Okay.
Because, just, my only question is, because there are so many uses, and we have no idea if there's, what, what the use, like, how many trips are there going to be? How, how many people from the food trucks are going to use the bathrooms? How many?
So.
Have an answer for that?
I do, yeah. So that goes back to the numbers I was going over before, Margaret. So, you know, we, we have to assume certain things if we're going to go after that. It's all assumptions, right? It's, the engineer's going to assume some things, I'm going to assume some things. I'm going off the numbers that were provided from the Maine DOT in terms of numbers. Even if we double them, we're still, and I'm assuming, again, this is a funny number, we're assuming 75% of the people that are going down the road are coming into the collective in these numbers, and we're still at double the traffic rates, well under the required septic, right? So, having the engineer review traffic patterns associated with things, you know, if I assumed a much more practical number in terms of people coming down the road and visiting the collective to somewhere around 30 to 40%, that brings our usage way, 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 way down.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. That, that's great. I feel really good about where we are right now. I think we can move ahead. What do you think? Poor thing. Anybody from the public would like to speak? Any questions?
Yeah, this is the positive.
This is Mr. Baraboe?
Yeah, I've lived in an restaurant location for over 30 years, and this building, Larry Crocker.
I don't believe your mic is on. Mary Ann's coming out to tell you that.
Are you, can you hear me?
No.
I can hear you. I don't know if it's on.
I don't think anyone out there can hear you. Go the other way.
Okay, here we go. This building, all right. Is the most controversial building in Harpswell.
One of them.
You all know that.
Yeah.
Because Mr. Crocker threw more curveballs at everybody and left the premises with $2.5 million, which is fine, that's, you know, wonderful if you can do that, but I think it's important for the, for the town, the board, to have clarity on this particular building, because the reputation is that he got away with everything. And I don't mean to demean him, but he did. And he built a second level that he was never allowed to use because he was illegal, and other constructs as well. So I think what's important is that the board and the reputation for a detailed review is done thoroughly and completely, and I applaud the Zieglers for what their plans are. I think it's exciting, I really do. I hope you add a donut shop or something.
One of the food trucks, yes.
That, that would salt the deal for us. Anyway, I, I just needed to say that because I've observed and heard and talked with neighbors, and they always felt that, well, I guess we'll never know who approved it, but it's going to be approved because it's Crocker. And so that's all I have to say.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate the comments, and I know there was a reputation there. We are not Mr. Crocker, I promise you that. We are, you know, I was born in Brunswick. I'm a Mainer. I used to come down to Harpswell when I was a little boy and enjoy it very much. We went up, when, I left when I was five years old, went down to the evil place called Massachusetts and been trying to get back up here ever since. And my beautiful wife and I bought a cottage here in 2018, and we're trying to get up here full-time. As soon as our daughter's out of high school, we're coming right up, and we're trying to do the right thing for Harpswell, bottom line.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Ziegler? The Ziegler? Anybody else? Oh, please state your name.
Yes, good evening. My name is Michelle Hanson, and I live two doors away from your property. My concern is the same as, well, similar to what's been already vented as far as the traffic and parking and things, because as a resident at times, that I see people walking on the road, and I just don't know how they're not getting hit sometimes. There's such a small spot for them to fit into as they try to walk and exercise and maybe bike ride and enjoy it all, that more traffic is just even more of a risk. And being just two doors away, I'm thinking they're going to come and try and turn around in my driveway when they've decided they want to go the opposite direction. So I'm concerned about that as well. So I don't know if we can institute some kind of prevention or protective thing, whether it be somehow putting speed traps, or, yeah, speed bumps or something that will slow people down as well as monitoring it, because I really think there's going to be a tragedy there. There's just so much, there's so little space for the humans to go with the cars, never mind dogs and things.
Totally understand that, and thank you for bringing that up. So I, just to, you know, provide a little bit of color again, I keep using that word. So, back in the day, it was the Estes Restaurant, and that served hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people a day, and they had parking across the street that encouraged traffic to come down. We don't have that. We have limited parking, we have limited seating, so we don't anticipate the traffic needs any more than the restaurant was back in the day. We actually anticipate it to be less, unfortunately for us as a business, but, you know, we're planning around that for a business. Half of the business there are going to be resident artists, so they're going to be up there, that's going to be a handful of cars, right? So the, the events will be, as I was mentioning earlier, you know, if we have larger events, which we're not planning on doing, to be honest, we're planning on keeping them pretty small, 42 people or less is what we can accommodate from a parking perspective. That's pretty small. And if we go above that, we're planning on asking the people that are planning the event to shuttle people from another area to keep those traffic volumes down.
That's true.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm just looking to see what we're, what we're going to do here.
Were there other people who wanted to?
I'm, I'm looking down. Anybody else would like to contribute?
That person went away. It was on Zoom.
All right.
She left after the first application.
I think Courtney may have a question.
Yeah, I didn't know what they were. One thing that concerns me a little bit is the parking of folks that have to back into the road. I don't know whether we have any purview for making suggestions that way, but that does seem dangerous. Maybe that's the way it was done before, but that, maybe there was no approval and it was just done. So, I don't know how many parking spaces you need, but those ones that are the back-out ones, is there some way of reforming them or having slightly fewer so you can pull in? I don't know if this is mainly just a question of practicality that I'm asking.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
And I took that into account when we, you know, built the plan out, and I understand that's a concern. I read that in the, in the rules. But it has been a precedent set for however long it's been there. From my understanding, that's, you know, been since Larry owned the place, which is, you know, 50-plus years ago. So again, you know, pointing to historical events at a major restaurant where you're backing out and having traffic coming out of a parking lot the other way, you know, I'm hoping that's not an issue. If we need to revise that, we can, but it costs us parking, and we're already very, very limited in parking.
Okay. What I'm, what I'm grappling with here is, we are looking at whether the application meets the standards, but one of the standards is not met, subsurface waste disposal. So, or at least it, it, it can be met with a condition of approval. So, what I'm trying to decide is going through the, the findings, referring the findings to the findings, and incorporating them by reference, but also adding the condition for the consulting engineer's review. Because that would have to be added to the, the findings section and also to the conclusions of law. Right? So I'm going to move, I'm just gonna try this out. Let me find that, the first page. Sorry. Findings affect. I'm going to move, I move that the planning board finds that the application of Andrew and Elizabeth Ziegler meets the following approval standards of Section fifteen of the Site Plan Review Ordinance, based on the finding, the following findings and conditions that are incorporated into this motion by reference. Specifically, condition section fifteen point twelve, subsurface waste disposal. The applicant will, or the planner will acquire the services of a consulting engineer to review the application for compliance with subsurface wastewater, subsurface wastewater with specific emphasis on traffic and toxic and hazardous, hazardous waste disposal.
I think there may be a simpler way of doing it now that you have that, is to...
Sometimes.
No, you've got, you've got the language, but I think what we can do is, is say the, the, we are accepting the planner's recommendations as amended in Section fifteen twelve to read.
Do it.
I, I wanna stop you there. You have to find that the standard is met or not met. So I, I feel like if you're gonna involve a consulting engineer, we would get the results from, from Andrew's soil guide, then we'd talk to the consulting engineer, we'd bring back the results next week.
Okay.
Next month for you guys to make that finding.
So we would...
Whether or not the standard, because there's no point in him doing the review if you guys have already approved it, in, in my opinion.
Okay.
Margaret, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, you know, we have a lot of pending construction and things that we're ready to get moving on, right? So this is all dependent on the subsurface wastewater, right? So as I mentioned before, you know, the plan is if we don't meet the standard today, that we will plan to expand the leach field in accordance with the new requirements. So is there a way to get approval on the plan today with, you know, as meeting the requirements with that caveat that we can put in writing somehow?
That's what I was trying to do.
Yeah, don't we, we've done that before.
Yeah.
I don't think that's logical because there's no point in improve, we want, we need to make, we, they need to make sure that you're meeting that standard.
But wouldn't that be the conditions of approval, that we would append to the, to the motion?
On Section fifteen point twelve, does he meet the standard or does he not? We don't know the answer. And we won't know the answer tonight.
All right, so then the option that would, would be to, we have, we have voted?
Amy, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I, I am, I am gonna keep speaking.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. We have approved the request for a change of use of structure. We could table site plan review and conclusions of law until this issue has been resolved and then get back here. And the planning board is more than happy, usually, to accommodate the applicant as best as we can. We get paid a ton of money, as you know, to do all of this. But we would be happy to come back so that we can accommodate you to the best of our ability, if that's what we have to do, just, just for you to know that.
Understood, thank you for that. I just wanna point out that this was a mistake in my calculations that's what's driving this whole conversation, right? And the revised calculations that, you know, I came up with based upon the flag were way lower than, you know. So this, this conversation is around a mistake that I made in the documentation that I provided, and I'm hoping that the revised information that I'm providing helps to amend that mistake.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, you know, since Margaret's finding that your standard was not met, but was based on your statement that the artist collective will use approximately six hundred and two gallons per day, right?
Sixteen oh, uh, yeah.
Sixteen, okay.
Sixteen oh two, yeah.
With the information that you have provided now, that you say, we would say the standard is met based on the finding that the collective will use approximately one thousand twelve whatever gallons per day?
Nine sixty-two or something, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It was ten eighty-six.
Okay, okay.
Ten eighty, that the collective will use approximately ten eighty-six gallons per day and change that third bullet point to say that. Because at that point then, the standard would be met based on his recommendations, and we can still put in the condition of approval to verify it.
Okay, I get that. However, I don't like the way that this is being, we have nothing from you in writing. It's all word of mouth. Margaret cannot back up anything except by going back over the minutes here. Code has nothing in writing, and that isn't gonna work for me.
So, Amy, I do, I do have it in writing. I sent an email to Margaret earlier today with that information, and I have backup on the phone to, to back up the stated numbers if you wanna see them tonight.
Do we have that? I don't recall seeing...
He sent me information about, based on traffic, and I said, my response to that was, we'll, we'll talk about it at the meeting tonight. And also, when you base things off traffic, then it kinda opens the door to needing a, a traffic engineer. You know, when you, when you base your septic use off the traffic, and none of us are traffic engineers, how are we gonna know that that information is accurate? It's just, it's way more complicated because it, it's not, it, it doesn't easily line up to all the septic uses on, on their table that they provide.
I, I think you could tell that we wanna help you out. We really do. But as Mr. Barabo said, this property has, you know, gotten through on a wing and a prayer, and, oh, you know, it's better to take action and then get the punishment later. So we really wanna make sure that we are doing our homework because we are charged with fulfilling our obligations with this ordinance. And I personally, the board may, may override me, but I don't feel comfortable until we have this stuff in writing and we, we really know where we are. And we will try to accommodate you. I know you've got a schedule, and I, I get that. You know, if we can meet in two weeks, then we'll do that. But that may be where we go.
Okay. Can I ask a favor? Is it okay if we start working on the construction of the?
No, sir, it is not. Absolutely not.
Okay.
You know, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna push back on you a little bit. We do the best we can. You have created your own schedule, sir, and we, we really try to accommodate.
I'm not pushing back on that at all, I understand.
We, we want to help you out, we really do.
I, I know. I'm just sad.
What does the board wanna do here?
I'll ask, could we...
As sad as your dog is in the back of, in the back of the video, she's cracking me up.
Mr. Tim?
Yeah, can we, like, meet in a week, maybe, instead of two weeks? Okay.
See what Tim asks us to say.
It's just like if I employ X amount of people and I can only put so many people through the, the model. That's your problem, that. It's not the driving by, it's...
It's the, yeah, yeah, that's right, that's a good call. All right, yeah, I can convert that really quick.
Can we have that conversation in a public forum?
So, Tim, Tim brought up the fact that we are not limited by the traffic that's going by. It's amount of capacity that we have via parking, right? So we have a total capacity on the table of thirty-four parking spots, right? So we're limited by that in terms of how many people can park there an hour. Tim, how, how would you calculate that? How many people would park there?
It's just that we have, we have in the subsurface...
Tim, Tim? You must speak into the microphone.
We have just, if I have a, if I have a business, I only have so many employees, I only have so many parking. It's like taking our schedule that's in the book and flipping it backwards because we don't have anything that defines what he's trying to do. So I just thought to myself, well, wait a minute. We do, if I know what kind of business you have, I know how many parking I have. So we just gotta flip it, in my opinion. That's what I was, thought it'd be easier and faster.
Thank you.
Because I think the system is well oversized. I think we're just looking at it, we have to look at it differently.
Thank you.
That's all.
Is that something we can do tonight? Can you...
Well, that's why I didn't know what he had on his phone. I don't have, I don't have my book, I don't, I tried to look for something like that earlier today, but I wasn't grasping what I needed to look for, and it just came to me, flipping it.
So, so if we flip it, we're...
We're, we're probably okay. But again, ah. I'm trying, I'm, steam is coming out of my ears, it's coming out of my brain. I'm trying to think this through. Trying to get you approval, but, tonight, but, but with adequate backup and documentation. That has to happen.
Absolutely.
And, and the peer review has to happen. And I think Margaret is, you know, Margaret has a good point with regard to traffic and...
Can we not, can we do that it's approved with the condition that the peer review approves it, that?
And that if it's, if it substantially differs, that, that you would have to come back.
Yeah.
That's fine.
So the peer review, the consulting engineer would be for the subsurface wastewater disposal, the toxic and hazardous waste disposal. And I don't know if we're gonna base the subsurface waste disposal off parking spaces. Why do we need a traffic study? We don't. We don't need a traffic engineer.
He was just basing his off traffic.
Okay, got it, all right.
So to your point, we don't need that if we're doing it off of the parking spaces, that's right.
So we could make a motion to approve this project with amending the section...
The findings on section fifteen.
The findings, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, whoa. Yeah. The, the relevant section, fifteen point twelve.
To, the standard is met based on the following findings. Then the third bullet would say the artist collective will use approximately ten eighty-two gallons per day, three hundred and forty-two gallons per day. Oh, and then scratch that second half.
Okay.
Okay, that does it.
Okay, all right. I move.
So, hold on, hold on a second. So what you are doing, your recommendation, your recommendations that are incorporated by reference includes an amendment to fifteen point twelve.
You guys are making the, you guys are making the findings, not me.
No, but you, you...
I've recommended findings, you guys are making the findings. You don't have to vote to amend them. You guys are making them all.
No, but, but if we're incorporating your, are you recommending that we do that? The ten eighty-two?
That's up to you, you make the findings.
No, but, no, that, you didn't answer my question, is that your, is that your...
Oh, do I, do I recommend that you're, that you change? I, in my opinion, it would make more sense for a licensed site evaluator to come up with the number than Andrew or us. That's, you know, I told him that at the very beginning, that...
But if we make that peer review, a condition of approval, then we, we aren't, we are...
Then if it's met, he doesn't have to wait for us to have a meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's not met, then he has to come back.
Yeah, if it's not met, then it's on, it's a risk that the applicant is taking. But, but we know that the work will be done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That makes the most sense to me.
So I move, is there any further discussion? I'm gonna try this one more time.
Okay, we just have to, okay.
Okay. You, you check me, do you wanna do it?
No, go ahead, I'll just criticize what you do. Okay.
No brownies for you.
No, I know.
Okay.
Been looking at them.
I move that the planning board finds that the application of Andrew and Elizabeth Ziegler meets the following approval standards of Section fifteen of the Site Plan Review Ordinance, based on the following findings that are incorporated into this motion by reference, which includes an amendment of Section fifteen point twelve to read, the standard is met based on the applicant's calculation that they will use one thousand eighty-two gallons per day.
That's good.
That is my, that is my motion.
With a condition?
Do we put a condition?
We're gonna do that in the conclusion of law.
In the conclusion.
Okay.
Excuse me? Glad you joined the planning board? Can you believe this?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Wait, discussion from the audience?
Hi, again, my question is how do you monitor this afterwards? Six months, twelve months, whatever? And for what period of time do you monitor it? Subsequent to this?
That's a really good question. I'm going to, that's a, that's a really good question. I would ask the codes enforcement or the planner to respond to, to your question. The answer basically is we don't. Because not unless you, you would like us to hire like fifteen more codes officers who would go out and, and do that monitoring. Because it takes staff power, and we'd have to go and, you know, knock on multitude of doors. And I don't mean to be facetious because it's a good question.
Whenever we get a report of a leach field failing, we go out and investigate. And at that time, if it was yours, your, by our ordinance, you got thirty days to fix it or else. We try and work with people. Basically. And that's why we go by, where we know. Otherwise, I guess the only other way you would do it is like, they, when they used to use the well, they had gallons, how many gallons they were using a day. So if that really spiked up, we know it's gotta be going someplace. I, I don't know how else to... It, it's pretty easy to see if there's a failure when there is. You know? And if, if you're living next door, you're gonna know.
Great, I'll know after that.
It is a good question. I mean...
That can also happen residentially, like it does without anybody's control.
We have a couple right now we're working on.
I live next to the boatyard.
And they're getting a state grant to fix it. And these other situations.
Yeah, there are many situations, happens with tree cutting. People cut trees on lots that they are not supposed to cut, and we don't know about it unless someone like yourself, a neighbor, comes by and says, hey, would you check this out? Because we just don't have eyes everywhere. And, and that's good, we have to trust people, you know? But, you know, your, your point is, is well, well-made. Sometimes we wish we did. So, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the table, and it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Well, we still have to do our discussion. Oral, no.
Yes, we have?
Yeah.
Yes.
Laurie, aye.
Heather, aye.
Amy, aye.
Dan, aye.
Courtney, aye.
When I say all those in favor, just step up to the floor. Okay.
And now we're going to the...
Now we go into the conclusions of law. In light of these, well, Dan, you go for it.
Okay, but, but you're gonna add in that paragraph, right?
I will.
Okay. The planning board finds that the applicants Andrew and Elizabeth Ziegler have met the standards of the Town of Harpswell Site Plan Review Ordinance. The, the planning board approves the application and site plan for an art collective at nineteen oh six Harpswell Neck Road, map eighteen lot one oh eight, with the following standard and additional conditions of approval. One, the approval is not final until such time as final plans showing all conditions of approval and any waivers granted have been signed by the Chair of the Planning Board. This approval is based on the approved plans and all submissions and information provided by the applicant at final approval, whether referenced in any findings or conditions of approval. Two, this... Two, this approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposal and plans contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. Any variation from the plan, proposals, and supporting documents, except the minimus changes as determined by the town planner that do not affect approval standards, is subject to the review and approval of the planning board prior to implementation. Three, the applicant shall obtain all necessary state and federal approvals before the applicant commences any land use activity pursuant to this site plan approval, and shall comply with the requirements of those permits and approvals. Four, all work shall be completed in accordance with best management practices for soil erosion and sedimentation control. Five, this permit is limited to site plan review. A separate sign permit shall be obtained from the code enforcement office based on compliance with the Harpswell Sign Ordinance. Six, one copy of the notice of decision must be recorded by the applicant in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds within forty-five days of approval and the book and page number provided to the code enforcement officer. Failure by the applicant to record the notice of decision shall void the site plan approval. The app, seven, the applicant will provide documentation showing approval from the main Department of Transportation prior to the issuance of any permits from the code enforcement office. Eight, the approval is based on the finding that the applicant proposes to undertake improvements on the structure of less than fifty percent of the market value of the structure. A flood hazard development permit for improvements totaling greater than fifty percent may require substantial changes to the site. Any proposed changes that qualify as new construction or substantial improvement, as defined in the Harpswell Flood Plane Management Ordinance on the site, will impact the findings effect in this notice of decision and are subject to review and approval by, of the planning board before permitting by the code enforcement office. Nine."
Nine. Within one month of approval of this application, the applicant shall submit a plan for subsurface wastewater disposal, for a subsurface wastewater disposal system for the new use to the planner, who will obtain the services of a peer reviewer. Any significant deviation from the approved plan and calculations will require the applicant to come before the planning board again. The applicant to...
Any deviations, or any significant deviations are subject to review and approval of the planning board.
And he must install, which he said, that he would increase the leach field as...
As required.
Engineer, as required, yeah.
Did you get that, that last part?
Say your first part again.
Okay. Within one month of approval of this application, the applicant shall submit plans for subsurface wastewater disposal system for the new uses to the planner, who will obtain the services of a peer reviewer, period. Any significant deviation from the approved calculations will require...
Review and approval of the planning board.
And?
And...
Compliance with?
And the applicant will install and expand septic system if required.
Okay, do we have that?
Hope so.
Can it say modify instead of install?
Okay, it's on tape.
It's an existing one.
I have the, the first seventy-five percent of it.
Okay.
All right, that motion is on the table.
I moved it.
You moved it, I'll, anybody want to second it?
I'll second.
Second it? Any discussion?
Where do we have, and I'm sorry, my brain is like dead now, where do we have the commitment for putting in the filter system? I was wondering whether that, is that in the first part, the change of use, or is it here?
That will be here, in the review.
Do we have that listed here?
That's in the conditions of approval.
It's in the condition of approval, that's, the peer reviewer will look at that.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, the, really fast, if we're in discussion, we got a second, right? No, yeah, we got a second. So for discussion, the peer review is going to look at the septic capacity for the proposed uses, and the...
The removal of hazardous or toxic waste, the plan for removal of hazardous or toxic waste.
I just didn't hear that.
Yeah.
This time around.
No, that's good, that's good to get it, that's why I want to really get it.
Anything else? I don't think so, because we took out the parking component. I mean, we took out the traffic component.
Yeah, we did. So, do you feel like you're clear on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's been moved, it's been seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor, step up to the plate.
Lori, aye.
Heather, aye.
Amy, aye?
Dan, aye.
Courtney, aye.
You're very welcome. We will, we will accept contributions to the, the planners' food fund.
Yes, of course.
Thank you all for all the, the time tonight, I appreciate it very much.
We really, we really try everything that we can.
Yeah, I saw it.
And, and we, you know, that means that we talk a lot, but we finally get to someplace where we're all...
Yeah, I mean, and we don't have like a private room where we can go and have the discuss, it's all public, which is why it takes us so long. When we meet for a workshop, it's a different story.
And by the way, much success to you.
Yes, really.
Thank you, we're very excited.
It's a lovely idea.
We're very excited, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, a pleasure to meet you all. Maggie, Dave, it's good to meet you. So I would love to have you over and talk a little more.
Wow, so much material to recycle.
Aren't you having fun yet?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have to do more stuff.
This was a long...
What is this? Yeah, it's not usually like this. It's like pulling teeth, isn't it?
Yeah. I sat at a conference all day and then went to soccer practice and then came here. My brain is toast.
Yeah, me too. I'm trying to figure it out, and what the motion should be.
I do hate Tim's thought that was, limited by the parking.
Yeah, yeah.
My brain, my brain is Dave.
Are we reviewing this? Are we doing this other stuff?
I think we should, I think we should do, we should process. Okay, thanks. Let's move on.
Yep, we have other...
Let's move on.
Oh, we don't have a side bar.
We have other business. I'm going to say, has anybody read the minutes for sixteenth, July sixteenth in August? Didn't we do that and make some recommended changes? Yeah, yeah, I did. I'm going to, I read them, and I think someone else...
Sure, I, I think I read them, I just can't remember anything now.
I was just going to say, I think I read them.
Yeah.
And did we?
All right, I, I move that we approve the minutes for July sixteenth.
What is that, a panini?
I move.
Yeah.
Sorry, you moved that what?
I move that we approve the minutes from July sixteenth and August twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Courtney, aye.
Tim, thank you very much for sitting through.
I mean, you're talking about, I know this is off, it is a storm tour.
No.
Better, storm, or washout, where the trucks are going to go, because there was a, looked like a sinkhole.
There was, I know.
Yes, I pointed that out to him. I pointed that out to him.
Yes, we all, but I want to make sure it gets addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, and thank you for coming, you're invaluable. Well, to him you sure were tonight. Okay, so we've done that. Update on the draft comp plan. It's been, it has been a long, hard process, I don't want to belabor anything, there's a, there's going to be a lot of stuff that, that will affect us, not just, not so much in the comp plan, but the state zone, state legal stuff, we need to do a workshop on that.
We need to approve the comp plan.
We need to approve the comp plan and get, get moving on, and so, yeah.
Just to see to it that all of the concerns from the state are taken care of.
Yeah. The big thing I would say is, I'm sorry, I know you...
Oh, I was just going to talk about procedural stuff, go for it.
Big thing I wanted to say is that the comp plan in the state, recommendation, the state law, we are, every town is supposed to designate a growth area and a rural area. We decided, because we have no public water and sewer, and we have shallow depth to bedrock, and we've been in a drought, and God knows how people's wells are doing this summer, we chose to petition to have no growth area. Now, once the plan is approved, then we will petition the state for approval of our plan with the request that we, that we are excused from designating a growth area. If that is approved, then that will take part of a burden off the town's shoulders. But regardless, there's new legislation that is going to significantly affect this board's ability to review things. And I think that, I wish that we had been, everybody had been at the workshop, but I think we are going to need to really, that's going to really change some things, it's going to really change things, and I think that the planning office is going to need to, and the codes office, is going to need to keep a tally of how many new developments we have as a result of this new legislation. Because they're going to be, you're going to see lots pop up and divided, our minimum lot size in some ways is basically a moot point in some, in some ways.
So what happens if these get approved, then they go dry? Who's paying for the water? I mean, because that, that's a very real concern, there's already people in town that are having to truck their water in. Now you do a density concentration, it's a very real problem.
Well, one of, one of the issues that we have is that we did, in the two thousand five comprehensive plan, there is a provision for a growth area.
Yep.
And so, if we do not pass the new comprehensive plan, that's the one that we're going to still be under.
I'm not sure that that's true, but...
We'd still be under it, but it just, it's not certified by the state anymore.
Right.
It, they, it's only certified for ten years, the new law will change that to twelve years. The problem with our water is because we have a fractured bedrock aquifer, there's no way to know in any given area the quality or quantity of our water, and to steal Mary Anne's thunder, she's going to talk about a grant that we just applied for, she just applied for, on behalf of the Resiliency and Sustainability Committee, to study the town's water.
However, before she does that, I think one of the things, because that's going to, before, before that happens, this community, and we need to do our bit, needs to, needs to know with every new development where the well is and what the capacity is, and we need to start to develop a townwide database on that very issue. So...
Go to it.
Go for it.
If I have to sit through the whole meeting, I figure I can say something at the end.
You get enough times to talk, honey.
I did want to mention that we have a program coming up on October eighteenth.
Mm-hmm.
And it's naming, it's, it's going to be veered more towards erosion at the coast, how, how to think about it, but it's also tied into our water usage. And, you know, we are on a fractured bedrock, it's this whole education thing of people who come here, I hate the use of say people, folks come to live here, they like it, but they have never lived...
On a well.
On a well. And it just takes a lot, a lot of energy. We're going, we're talking more, we're in a drought now, unusual, because we had enough water, and we got out of our drought, and we got, had enough water in June, and two months later, we're in a drought. So a lot of it is going to be just talking over and over. The grant that we applied for, if we get it, will start taking a survey of where wells are, and then we are going to have, after we get a survey of what we can get, it'll be similar to what was done in two thousand and eight, folks will give us information as to if they're having a problem, what type of a problem it is, and then we can go from there to see who is willing to have their well tested if they're having a problem.
But it won't be every well in town.
Well, no.
So how many wells will it be?
Well, the last time they did it, they had nine, we have nine hundred and seventy-two records from the last time they did it in two thousand and eight. At that time, they got a response of eighty percent of the people that got letters saying that they wanted their, they were giving information about their well. So, we're hoping, given enough, we're going to keep talking about this, you're going to hear, you're going to turn to looking at me, and everybody else is a water witch, but we're going to keep talking about having people give us information.
Yeah.
And we'll get, they'll get a form that they can fill out, they don't have to put their name on it, however, if they want to get some relief or some help, you know, at that point, you would have to give your name.
Is that going to get mail to every homeowner?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so that's, that's the plan.
That's great.
Isn't there something in there too, that adds a reward for giving that information, they will get their water tested?
Well, that's, we, we have to get some money to do that. I figured it out, there's four thou, four thousand some wells, I mean, four thousand properties that are developed in town.
And you have to figure there's at least a well for each house.
Yeah. So let's just take four thousand dollars, you can, it adds up really quickly.
Yeah, true.
So we're up like...
I didn't know if that was going to be covered by that grant.
No, that's not big enough for that.
Oh, okay.
Mary Anne, how, how does it help not to have a person's name, because then we don't know where the well is? How would that be, I mean, just knowing there is a well, but unless we know, say, there are three wells close together and there's a...
Well, we're not going to just get their name, we're going to ask, we're going to give them the option to go out and just stand on their well and take, take a picture, which will go up to the...
But we still need to know where it is.
You don't know necessarily who has it, you just know the location geographically...
Okay, as long as it's...
Where it is. And that's all the state needs to know.
All right.
Okay. But we need to know, I mean...
And we only need to know, we don't need to know who has it, we just need to know where in areas of town you have wells.
Right.
It's like Tim going out and marking it when he does a site visit, it's the same.
Will we know the capacity of the well? What will we know besides location?
We'll know the location, we'll ask them to, to flip the top over on the well, which gives the depth of the well and the gallons per minute.
Okay.
And that's all the state needs to know.
I didn't know it gave gallons.
But we might want to know if it's run dry.
I have no idea.
But you've already said sometime before, now everybody wants to disclose that information because it affects...
We don't need to know whether it's run dry, because if it's not going to be using that well any longer. Put it this way, wells can run dry two ways, saltwater intrusion contaminates the well, you have to now build, drill another one. Many times, they just need time to refill. So, when it's, you have a lot of people over, and you have a drought, you might run out of water, go to bed, and the next morning, you'll have water again. So a lot of it is a replenishment, and that's, I think that's part of really trying to get this whole message across. And I'm looking at Heather, because you've been thinking about this for years, I know.
You can agree to disagree with me, but I think sometimes the visitors treat wells better than regular residents that move here that don't, because we spend so much time educating them.
Exactly.
That if, and people that buy a house here just move here and don't, so.
So, yeah, and we, and that's something we're thinking more, I think, rather, I would really want to sit and talk to realtors and talk to you...
Right.
To, to all of you, to just get a sense of what your understanding is and how you can help us, basically. So we're going to really put a push on, I think, of talking about this a lot more before we do, than we do it.
I'm, I'll get in trouble for anybody watching saying this, but it's just fine. I would start with realtors, because the, all of the rental agencies, agencies, I can't speak for people that rent on their own.
Right.
We all educate about wells, and regularly, like, we don't do, don't have laundry done, they all do sheets and towels, off-site, off, out of town.
I didn't realize you did that part, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, so there's no, I mean, people sometimes still do personal laundry, but to be honest, most people don't wash their whites at vacation here, so.
Right.
That lemon stuff. But I think, again, when you buy a house, it's very different if you've come from a city with water and...
Does Scuttlebutt have something about water, the Scuttlebutt handout?
It does not.
I don't think, I don't think it covers water.
No, because the vacation rental property managers made... No, because the vacation rental property managers made something for...
That needs to be something then that's made and given, what?
There's more.
There's more what?
They're working on a...
They're working, as part of this grant, they're going to be doing a publication to educate people about issues.
Oh, that's right, I forgot about that piece.
Like a coastal, what do, do you have a name for it? Like a coastal preparedness manual.
It's gonna be a resilience.
That's cool.
That's gonna be, just generally resilience to sea level rise and electricity issues. We're gonna put a centerfold in, that's gonna be all about water.
Yep, right, I love it.
So...
We, we did something like that in Brunswick with the Coastal Protection Zone. And we did, it was about how to maintain your septic system.
Exactly.
And Ellie Swanson, who I don't think is on the planet anymore, had a really great idea, which was, this should be something that you can read while you're sitting on the toilet. And, and it was actually a really good one, and a lot of the information was hand-drawn and hand-printed, so it was really accessible. And it, it wasn't, you know, didn't require half an hour and a master's degree to understand it. You could just, you could just look at it, had the ver- the basics, and it, it was mailed to every single home. And, yeah, it was, how, how often should you pump your septic system? Where can you get it pumped, here are some phone numbers? What should you put in it, what should you not? You know, just, you know, here's how your leach field works, just very broadly.
Very broadly, right.
And with water, you know, just how to collect it, you know? I do my dehumidifier.
Yeah.
And I catch that in a barrel, and that waters the garden, so I don't tap into the well.
Yeah.
And so, I, I'm thinking more and more of these types of conversations like this are one of the more effective ways to, to tackle the problem. Because I think we're gonna have this crazy weather more and more. We don't get the snow anymore, we don't get the, the, the slow runoff. And it's just gonna be up to all of us to figure it out, how to keep our wells from going dry, really.
And this is, this is the issue with, for me, with the affordable housing push to make lots smaller and more densely developed, is those are the people, are the very people that can't afford to dig a new well.
Right, right.
And so, I, I just worry about, you know, what's gonna...
Who picks up the bill?
Yeah, who picks up the bill?
Well, you know, the other thing too is, the one thing I'm, I'm fairly comfortable with, because everything I've read about the new state laws, they don't apply to our town because we're on septic, and well...
They will, they will, though.
I'm not sure.
There are, there are...
There are some caveats in that.
Yeah, there are.
Whether...
There are aspects, we are, yeah, we're gonna be prevented from doing reviews of...
But, but what does that have?
And the lots can be smaller.
Even if they're on septic?
Yes, ma'am.
There's some caveats in there.
Well, I'm sure they probably could be.
Even if they're on septic, they can have, you can have a smaller, you can have more houses on this...
On smaller property.
On smaller property.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, it's, it's a two-edged sword, because we have people that, we need people to live in our town if it's, and, you know, how do, how do you, how do you figure it out? It's really...
At some point, you run out of space and then run out of water, and then there's just no more.
Yeah, I mean, I, I deal with this, you know, I've been going to bed for the past two months with an owl, breeding owl pair outside my bedroom window. They, they start at about nine o'clock at night, and they go until probably four o'clock in the morning. And I absolutely love them. Do you know how many acres it takes to support a breeding howl owl pair? Do you know? It takes up to a hundred acres.
Wow.
And so, my question is, there are certain place, things that we love in this town, and they don't have anybody advocating for them. And so, I'm, I'm doing that, I'm not gonna shut up about it, because it's what makes us a community, part of that. And I just think we are gonna risk losing it.
Yeah, we just have to be very careful, I think.
Yeah, we do.
If they allow us to be.
Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you.
I like the idea about the realtors.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
I think that is definitely, because it's true, people come in, they haven't been on a well or, or septic, and don't really have any idea, they have to conserve, you know, everybody doesn't shower twice a day.
Right, right.
And they do packets to give out to everybody, prospective client. Put it in the pack. I mean...
But Heather, I'm curious, because we've done that in the past.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's the most effective way. I'm thinking more that we should have one-on-one conversations and...
With a new, with a new buyer?
No, 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 with the realtors.
Oh.
Like, maybe go to one of their meetings that they have, like periodically? And really talk to them about it, more than just going in and say, would you hand these to...
Yeah. Oh, I think there needs to be some sort of conversation with them for the buy-in to hand it out.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it should be...
Because everybody's busy, I'm not even saying that they wouldn't, I'm just...
No, but I'm thinking...
If you mail something to me, I'd put it over here until it gets to my to-do, but if you come in and talk to me...
I would think it would have been better.
But when you think of the disclosure, all of the disclosures that people are given by a house...
Yeah, that's true.
This is one of those things they have to think about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because it's very different living in the country rather than living in the city.
And for the realtor too, if they're trying to sell a house, they know the well has gone dry, it's a lot tougher sell for them, but if they can help the people learn to manage that water, then they don't have that sell problem.
Yeah.
It's preventing that.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
My goodness, I cannot believe it. And you know what I love about what Mary Ann does, is she doesn't, her group, they talk to people, they don't, they don't mandate, they educate, which is really, really important. Non-residential development review process.
Wait, I'm not done with comp plan.
Oh.
I didn't get to say my piece.
Oh.
The comp plan, the comp plan has been finalized by the Comprehensive Plan Task Course to the committee members here. Courtney, you're an Oxylory member, you went to so many meetings.
Oh, I was gonna say, what?
You are, you are a dedicated member of the public. So, the plan has been finalized, it's gonna get voted on in November. The plan is to submit it to the state as soon as possible. I know Al discussed submitting it after, but we can submit it as soon as it's finalized, and, and they will tell us whether or not it's in compliance, so we could know that. Hopefully, we'd know that by November, but we can do it either way, but I think our plan is to submit it.
Did you just say it's submitted before voting or voted on?
So, the state recommends...
My brain's like, rambling about this.
So, this is a new, this is new information to me, as of like two weeks ago. The state recommends that you submit it before the town adopts it.
Makes sense to me to submit.
So that you can make sure it's in compliance. However, we don't have time to do that, because, because we're still waiting on the final, final version from Judy, which we've gotten like three times, and we'll get the, she sent me the fourth one sometime this afternoon. So, the select board on Thursday will talk about it and, and vote, I think, to submit it to the state. With the, you know, with the waiver request and everything.
Okay. Yeah, and that, I mean, it's, it's almost out of date.
I know, it's been a few years, yeah.
Amazing. Okay, non-residential review?
That was on the agenda.
Yeah, we had talked about doing a workshop, but...
Non-residential, what are we talking? What is that? Non-residential development review.
We had talked about doing a workshop at our last workshop. I don't reme-
I don't know what that is. What's the non-resi- what is that?
That makes no sense to me.
I know, I can't remember what it was, but I will just say this one thing. Our workshop, Courtney and who was there, Dan, and we had the best discussion. Yeah, I missed that one, because I had a stupid meeting at work and I couldn't get out of it. I wanted to be at that one.
And I, I just left feeling like, we should have more workshops. And because we just, we, we spoke, we talked freely, we got into all kinds of stuff. It was extremely helpful, and we all left feeling like, wow, we, we need to, we need to do that again. And if, if the comp plan, as the comp plan moves forward, there's gonna be a lot of implementation stuff that we're gonna have to talk about. And I think that the planning board should get, should keep itself apprised of the implementation stuff, because the board is gonna have to...
You're talking about like eighteen twenty-nine and seven fifty-one or whatever the other one is.
Yeah, so...
I will tell you that I am planning on requesting a consultant to help, help with the implementation. I know it's not probably the traditional route that town planners go, but because I'm new at my job, I haven't done a ton of ordinance amendments. And I really want the help in understanding, like, how ordinance amendments might affect other, other ordinance provisions, and I want to make sure that it's done correctly. And there's just gonna be so many moving parts, that I'm gonna request a consultant to help us with implementation.
I don't see how you can, you could not do that.
I think that traditionally, a town planner, like, you have the consultant to do the plan, and the town planner implements it, but I really would feel more comfortable, and I've talked to the administration, so... So, that's gonna be on my request, my budget request for next year.
I think you're, I think you're absolutely right, and I...
I don't want to do a bad job, you know?
Well, you're not gonna do a bad job, but I also think that, that the ordinance needs to be completely rewritten, I think, it needs to be completely reorganized. We have three separate ordinances, exactly, it should all be under one document.
Especially for somebody like me, who does not, no, does not have a master's in planning, has not been the town planner, I'm like, what is this?
No.
I can't find anything, Ctrl F doesn't work.
No, it needs to be completely reorganized, so that you don't find a provision in this shoreline zoning ordinance that is referenced in site plan review, and then you have to go to shoreline zoning.
Yeah.
Or parking, or then you have to go to site plan, you don't know what's in site plan. And then maybe it's in, you know, whatever, it's, it should all be in one document, and it should be thoroughly integrated. And that is gonna take AI to do that.
I mean, is the wording as it currently is really necessary? Like, when you have the beginning of a sentence, and then it's comma, as in reference to blah, 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 and it goes down for six lines, and then there's the verb, and I'm like, my God, what?
Well, the, the technology and now...
A lot of that comes from the state model word.
I'm so sorry.
If you're reading it, allows you to just, rather than having a whole paragraph, is to just click on it, it'll hotlink you over there instead, so you don't...
Yeah. Well, that would be useful too, but I want it to be written in English.
Well, you have that.
And I think that's probably not... I may not get that.
But think of all the interlineations there, think about how you typically would put something like that into a footnote.
Think of the public, think of the public, try, well, think of the public trying to read these things, where like, well, here's the ordinance, and they're like, what?
Well, part of the challenge is that it's a legal document, and it's...
That is a problem.
And, and a lot of the language is mandated by the state.
Somebody needs to go work on that.
All right, anyway.
Okay.
The board did a really great job tonight. I felt so sorry for you.
And Dan, I mean, I was like...
This is a good board.
It is a really...
I mean, you look at what we were able to accomplish for everybody by just talking through everything.
Yeah.
And that's, that's public service at its best.